You ready? Good evening, everyone present and those listening. I hope you can understand us all through our masks. Welcome to the October 12th Radford City School Board Meeting. I'd like for you to join me, please, in a moment of silence. All right, if you would, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Burrus, how about leading us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, you did. You're fine. Okay, a couple of things before we get rolling here announcements. I want to remind the public that's here. We're all struggling to hear and understand with the mask. I'd also like to remind the audience to please not talk to each other during board meetings. It is distracting, especially with the masks today. I know it's hard sometimes not to say something to your buddy beside you, but if you do need to have a conversation, please take it out in the hall. We would very, very much appreciate that. Also, going to tighten up a little bit, then a little lax because we needed input from certain folks that come. But it's really, it's an open meeting, but it is our meeting and we have an agenda to follow. And we certainly want you here listening. I would ask that if, especially, I'm probably mostly talking to principals and those other administrators in the building, we sometimes need input from you. And if you would, if you would come to the podium and I will say something like, "The board recognizes Mrs. Lane," or whatever, if you'd come up to the podium, it will help us hear you as well. I appreciate that very, very much. All right, folks on the board, have you had time to take a look and review the agenda?
Yep.
All right, any questions?
Nope.
All right, then, I know we have recognition.
I just have one. Ms. Slush, you're on.
I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah, you do.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Sorry. That's true. I got going too fast again. I do that sometimes. I have a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion approved. Now, Mr. Superintendent.
Actually, I have two. The first one is, I would like to take this time to thank the McCarg and Bell Heath staff for the week that they provided us last week with the biomedical science. I know we all went by and visited and it was just truly amazing and wonderful to see all that project-based learning and collaboration and everybody working together pretty much on the same task, just at different levels. So I know each of you all had the chance to go see. And then Ms. Lane was able to send us a really good video about that. And I do think that that is worthy of awards that we can find to submit for. So we'll look for those, too. And I want to just thank the community, too, and especially the students and staff. We have been, and I'm probably jinxing us and I don't want to do that, but I think it's, we have to let everybody know that we've been two weeks without a positive case of COVID within our schools right now.
Yay!
I think that that's outstanding and a testament to what our students and staff are doing, too, really. And you can see these students right here are doing what we see mostly every day when we visit the schools, is abiding by the rules and protocols that we have for being here. So just a thank you for that.
Yeah, and look how happy they look, even with the mask on.
And then I'd like to introduce them.
Please.
I'd actually like to introduce Ms. Lincoln Hooker and Ms. Lane, and then they can introduce these students here that have come to give the report for us.
And I think you're far enough away. If you could pull your mask down when you're at the podium, it would be helpful.
Thank you for the opportunity to have our students come and brag a little bit about what's been going on at Bell Heath. We are excited about where we are this year and the start that we've had this year. So our first speaker is going to be from our, oh, House Visionary.
We have something else to do, Ms. Lincoln Hooker.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Sorry. I'll let Ms. Lane take her.
Sorry, Ms. Lincoln Hooker. Okay, so they each have something they're going to give you first, and then they have something that they're going to share with you about all the things that we've done so far this year. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Lily.
My name is Lily Francis, and I'm in House Visionary, and I am in fifth grade, and I am a Bell Heath Ambassador.
Okay, hang on one second. Would you like for them to move over here as they speak? Okay, so Lily, one at a time. And if you're two.
And you can take your mask down, too, if you want.
I'll hold, you'll hold it for you? Sure, all right.
Hello, my name is Lily Francis. I am in fifth grade, and I am in House Visionary. I am a Bell Heath Ambassador. Bell Heath has a focus on scholarship, which is learning. Near the beginning of the school year, we took a reading and a math student growth assessment. This was to let teachers see what we already know and what we need to learn. It marks our position as to where we are academically and how we grow throughout the year. This past week, we took our first quarter benchmarks. It sounds like we take a lot of assessments, but these help our teachers and us know what we have learned so far this year and so they know how to best help us. To help our scholarship, we need to be exceptional Bobcats. Exceptional Bobcats try to be safe, peaceful, and respectful in hallways, classrooms, restrooms, cafeteria, recess, and in all classes. We try to include others while being kind, caring, and good listeners and pick up after ourselves. We try to say thank you and please. In our classrooms, we are having morning meetings so we can learn about others as well as ourselves. We have plenty of safety patrols officers this year to help monitor our halls before and after school, to help students remember to be safe, peaceful, and respectful. We appreciate their hard work. Bell Heath is raising exceptional Bobcat scholars.
Hello, my name is Olivia Sama War. I'm in House Tenacious, and I am a Bell Heath Ambassador. Bell Heath has a focus of service in their house systems. Our new administrators are Mrs. Lincoln Hooker and Mr. Wilder. Mrs. Lincoln Hooker was sworn to House Visionary. I mentioned house sorting. We also sorted new students and teachers in houses. This year, we are focused, we are focused on exceptional Bobcats having positive office referrals and service projects. Our newest service project is gathering books and bachelors of the Women's Resource Center. At Bell Heath, we are also doing some fun activities. We just had a rock, paper, scissors tournament. Competition happened in classes. Then, the winners faced off in a live competition to see who won. The winner was a fourth grader in Ms. Rackaway's class. We hope to have more fun competitions within our school.
My name is Sophia Watson. I'm, my name is Sophia Watson. I'm in fifth grade. I'm in House Compassion, and I'm a Bell Heath Ambassador. Our Bell Heath service is being modeled for us by our ministers, Ms. Lincoln Hooker and Mr. Wilder. They are busy with hosting special times with our students. In summer, before school started, Ms. Lincoln Hooker and Mr. Wilder had popsicles with principals, allowing students to meet them and get to know them a little better. As ambassadors, we had a special pizza with Ms. Lincoln Hooker and Mr. Wilder. We brainstormed ways ambassadors can be helpful within our school. Out came the idea of ambassadors helping matched as friends to kindergartners or first graders. We could read with them once a week and just check on them. This program is still in planning stage, but should begin soon. Ms. Lincoln Hooker and Ms. and Mr. Wilder is also having lunch with some students, recommended by teachers, and she is reading aloud in classrooms. She is staying very busy with our service projects. Bell Heath students are learning to serve and help others.
I am Luca Waitman. I'm in fifth grade, House Tenacious. I'm also an ambassador. Bell Heath School also emphasizes innovation. In our classes, we do STEM projects and we continue to problem solve. At the beginning of the school year, the students had lessons on digital safety rules as well as a lesson on computer use promise we make at the beginning of each year. We know we should protect our devices and use our accounts responsibly. Since we are an innovative school and a distinguished project lead-the-way school, we had a special week emphasizing biomedical science. Biomedical science is one of the project lead-the-way pathways. I think all of you visited us during this week and saw how engaged we all were during this fun problem-solving time. Also, our students are producing a WBHE news show each morning. They are learning about computer systems and the behind-the-scenes as well the production and anchoring of those shows. We would love for you to find our news on the Bell Heath News YouTube channel. In the envelope, you will find a QR code to scan for the link. The ambassadors have begun a digital writing project as an example for our teachers. We hope there will be many more digital writing portfolios within our school. In the envelope, you will also have a QR code to the link or to our digital writing project. We hope you will check it out. Bell Heath strives to integrate scholarship, service, and innovation in our school experience.
And without crying, because these guys represent the very best of our school and they represent the very best of this district, and I could not be prouder of the job that they did tonight. So I would like to take a moment and give them all another round of applause. And I also want to tell you, these are the smiles and the faces that you get to see every day, and this is why we are here. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be a part of this wonderful school and district. I appreciate it.
Why don't you guys come up here and turn around so your parents can take pictures of you with the board here? And Ms. Lane and.
Get those phones going.
Hold your signs up. Hold your signs up.
Can you see us?
We're good.
There we go.
Good job, guys.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Thank you so much, yeah. You know what, before you leave, if you'll turn back around, let me tell you something. A number of us up here have taught for many, many years. I taught middle school, there are high school people up here, college people. I don't know when I've seen more students comfortable speaking to us tonight. I am so proud that you represent the best of who we are. Thank you. They looked at us.
Public speaking skills are wonderful.
It is, and it really, really shows. Raise your hand if you practiced what you were going to say before you came up here. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Any other reports?
No, ma'am.
Thank you for coming. Proud parents, indeed. All right, that ends the report of students. Moving on to our consent items board. You had a chance to look at the minutes. Bills and petty cash. Student activities and... Always hate to hear that. Couple of things, I think we're on our attachment ahead of time, but make sure you've seen those. Use of school facilities. Any other? Covered them all? All right, I need a motion, please, to approve the consent items as presented.
I'm going to motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Motion passes. All right, information items. At this time, for those of you present and those of you listening, it's the information items, Ms. Long. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, we do not.
All right, are there any emails?
I didn't get any. Did you?
Okay, remind the listening public that we do have a specific place for you to send emails to the board ahead of time. We are not getting them the last, what, this time and one other time maybe?
Yeah, we got a few last time.
Last time, but not too many, so we want to hear from you. All right, I don't guess I need, if there's no one signed up to speak, we'll move on then. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Ms. Slush, and I'd like to just amend the agenda a little bit and have our school's security consultant, Mr. Donnie Goodman, come and give us an update of kind of where we are, where we are. You know, we're very lucky to have, of course, you all know that Donnie was former chief here in Radford and also very collaborative with the school district, and we're lucky to have him on our, on our team, so to speak, now, with all the experience that he has, especially in the area of school shootings and things of that nature. So he has come, he's done a lot of work for us already this year in getting our school safety plans together and various other things. So, Donnie, thank you for being here.
Am I allowed to take this off?
Yes, you can, absolutely.
So, following the presentation that you've already had will be a tough sell by me, okay? So, thank you all for having me. I'm going to start with a little Winston Churchill. To every person there comes in his or her lifetime that special moment when he or she is figuratively tapped on the shoulder and offered a chance to do a very special thing, unique to them and fitted to their talents. What a tragedy if that moment finds them unprepared or unqualified for that which would be their finest hour. So I bring you that to tell you, give you another quote from a guy that I teach with, that "The only thing worse than planning for an emergency is explaining why you didn't." And so what I want to, what I really want to tell you all today is that I think within the last six to eight months, we've done a lot of planning, a whole lot of changing, and a lot of moving things forward in what I think is, in what was a good thing into even better thing. So, we've revamped the emergency operations plan that's still being worked over. And understand that no plan is static, that plans need to change and evolve as situations do and as, as we do. And so in doing that, we have a broader division-wide plan and school-specific plans, still even looking at a pandemic-specific plan. And so I talk about planning because planning involves relationship. And as blessed as we are in this community, we're not blessed with unlimited resource. You guys know that. You do really well with making do with what we have. We have some older facilities. And I know that whenever I go into any one of your schools, it's like, boy, it'd be really nice if we could have this, or it'd be really nice if we could have this. And all of that is dependent on if you can modify what you have or if you have the funds to do any of it. And so I think the proper direction and the direction that we've taken is to try to... Well, we can't improve facilities except up to a certain point, but we've been trying to build confidence and knowledge in employees in how to deal with emergencies. And in that, we've, we did a half a day, well, few-hour tabletop, two tabletop exercises in here with quite a few people that are, that are here. And that was well done. And the thing that, that I take away from it is that the relationship exists to get through it. And the other thing is, is that we were able to identify a few things where we need improvement. And that's, that's why we do these things. Following up on that, McCarg and Bell Heath, they're a combined staff. I did the same kind of event for them. So not just what I, you guys have a different language. I speak cop language. I'm sorry. I don't speak education language. This is like your command staff, right? So, so I did it for the command staff and then I did it for the staff, okay? So, if you guys want to, like, send me an email about what to call you all, that would be awesome.
Me, too. I'm good with that.
And, and so in saying all of that, do it, like, I've never run any kind of tabletop exercise with that many people and only me facilitating. And it went, I was, I'll be honest, I went in, my expectation was, based on my own abilities, was fairly low because there are that many people. But it, we had a vigorous discussion about a lot of things that this tabletop was about. So that was good. We had lots of questions and some follow-up. I got to have some follow-up conversations, one-on-one, with some of your staff in those buildings, and that, and that was good. So, that leads me to the National Incident Management System. We kind of introduced that here with you guys. And incident command, like, how all that's going to happen if something happens, whether it's an active attack at your school, whether it's a weather emergency or something like that. So, involving Incident Command and National Incident Management System. If bigger agencies come in here, they are going to be operating under those systems. So it was good to bring that forward and to say, hey, this is how things work. This is where I see RCPS fitting and how things would work. Who's in charge? It defines roles. Understand that NIMS, or the National Incident Management System, came out of the 9/11 attacks. That what Department of Homeland Security wanted was a way for mainly public safety agencies, but all government pieces, to be able to work together and communicate in an emergency. So we're trying to introduce that. And I encourage you, if you have not taken, you can go online and take a couple of these NIMS classes. You won't be harmed by the knowledge, I promise you. It's good. And you can take them and understand the process a little bit more. There's actually one that helps you get reimbursed, like, if something bad happens. So that's, you know, really important. And I understand there are people in the community that are well-versed in that and will help, but the more knowledge, and I say this to the school board members, it's good. There's, there's actually a little, there's a block for elected officials. So, so it really helps people identify their roles and how things are going on. So we worked on that. I've done some condensed active threat training. Y'all know the group that I work for, that we brought some of that here. I've created a shorter version. I've done that. And I'm actually, you guys are invited tomorrow afternoon at the high school. Yeah, in the library, I'm doing another one. So, very, like I said, I think the more confidence we can build in employees and the more knowledge they have about how to respond. And, and yes, it's an active-threat environment kind of class, but it's all lecture. We don't do anything else. Please understand that my feeling about any of this is that stress inoculation training is really good, really is. But that's something that you have to build up to and then continually, continually, continually do. Otherwise, yeah, you just, you tend to cause more trouble than it's worth. And so just providing information and giving people a plan of action, again, there's that word "plan," is really important. And that's what, that's what we do in those classes. So, though I do think with Lee, you got the full, the full of effect.
That was tough.
And it is. It's hard. So we're doing that Wednesday. I know that I've provided some Stop the Bleed resource to Rob, and I know that we have some Stop the Bleed kits ordered, but I think we all are well aware of supply chain issues. So, I was at Grove the other day, just doing my thing, checking on things, and checked the AED and the first aid kit, and was very happy to find things in good order. I found a tourniquet in that kit. Now, what I'm going to go up there and do is actually give a little instruction on how important and how good it is and how to do it.
Donnie found some really good Stop the Bleed videos so that we don't have to bring our staff together. We can just push out videos to them to, and they're, they're not very, they're good. They're not long at all and they're very informative.
So I will say, though, when Stop the Bleed, I really don't know, like, I do know that at the fire department, you have one of the regional Stop the Bleed coordinators there, but I don't know how much they've actually spun back up to offering hands-on training. It's really good, and it's not just for active-threat kind of stuff. This is like when, you know, I fall through the sliding glass door and cut myself really bad. So it's, it's just really, really good, good stuff. So I encourage, it's free, it's really good. We can eventually, over time, kind of maybe bring that back. But I also understand how much y'all are trying to cram into limited, limited amounts of time. And so kind of, we're working on ways to improve communication, like physical communication. I think person-to-person, I, I don't, I don't have any problem with how we communicate. But I think we're still looking at the Rave Guardian app, and we're looking at purchase, to provide, that would interface quite well with what the city is doing and actually what Radford University is doing, too. So that kind of puts us on the same playing field of getting information. Rave, R-A-V-E. So.
And the replay, too, where?
Yes, and the, and those little hockey puck things, these little.
Looking at that, the replay ones we're looking at for our buses because they're, the bus, the buses won't, they're GPS, so we will know where the bus is at all times for that, too, so.
If it is, I'm not aware of it. I actually just looked it up and it just said rave, so.
And that's with the panic button?
Yeah, that has the, that's, you would, people could put it on their phone. It would have, and you'd have to swipe and hit it, but it would allow your phone to reach emergency. Or if, you can program it to the point that if I just. Or if, you can program it to the point that if I just need to get ahold of a principal, like, you could have a, teachers having a disruption in the classroom, and just needs a principal, they can hit, there's a list, they hit that, and boom, it alerts them, and the principal comes. So it's, yeah, it, it interfaces well. And when we talk about, okay, we can't, you know, we, we look at campuses, and you guys have campuses, right? And we want campuses to be inviting and provide an environment for people to learn. And, and yes, they have to be safe and secure, and, and we can't, like, build giant walls around and wall people in, but things like Rave, those, those kind of apps actually help people communicate in emergency. And the other thing was walkies. I think y'all are looking at, at getting more walkies. But, but I think the thing that I want you to take away more than anything else from what we've been doing is, I, I think the vast majority of your staff is trained up in, in, in active-threat response. The relationship in your command staff is good, the, there's good relationship with PD to make sure that the response is good, and, you know, we're committed to continually working on the plan. I, I actually was with Ms. Grant and Mr. Keister last week, talking about it. They're, they're looking over a couple of things that they, they might want to tweak to work better in their environment. So, yeah, so I'm, I'm committed to continually doing that and making, making, well, y'all know how much I have invested here. So, it's not, I, I don't need to state it every time I stand up here, but it's, it's just very important, it's my home.
Good to hear, though.
Yeah. It's my home, it's where my kids, my, where my kids were, where my granddaughter is, and where my wife works. So you don't need to get much more out of me, well, I mean, you can. What I, what I'm saying is, you don't need to get much more out of me to be invested in this process with you. I've started traveling again, so just hear me when I say that. That doesn't mean that I won't be doing things for y'all, it just means that I get to go, I go to Oklahoma next month. So I'll go to Oklahoma, and I get to see how things are done there, and I can come back here and I go, wow, that little thing they had by the door was really cool. I actually was in New Jersey a couple weeks ago and saw real quick ways to barricade doors. So, of course, it costs money, everything costs money, but it's not as expensive as changing configurations of buildings. So, just things that we can talk about and look at as we move forward. Questions for me?
You're so thorough. You're good.
My mother, if she was alive, would be very happy to hear that, so...
One of the things, too, that we're doing at Ken and Daniel, and Ken, and several others, are crisis intervention plans.
Oh, yeah.
And also, Donnie is helping with, as, as our THAAD and Mark and Derek, our threat assessments too, so we're working on those too. We're lucky, I know you hear a lot about school divisions pulling their school resource officers away from them. We have three really, really good school resource officers. They're not only experienced, but they're extremely good with the children, which is very important, so...
Yeah, I think, you know, I think any, and that goes back to relationship. You guys have built relationship with these people, and even when there are, there are bumps in the road, you guys are able to kind of hammer them out, and that's what's important. We're not always, like, there's, there's going to be disagreements, and there's going to be, well, process disagreements probably more than anything else. And as long as, as we can maintain those relationships, and I'll just say that the bet, like, of course, you're going to hear me disagree about pulling school resource officers out of the schools, that, like, yeah, you could have bet a lot of money on that, you would have won. But, yeah, it's, I, I think it's vital for our communities. We know that statistically, when there's resource officers at schools, the, the amount of violence coming from outside in significantly decreases. So, yeah, it's just really important. I mean, that, I, you know, I hate to, I hate to, you can either love me or hate me, but I put that into schools how many years ago, Dad?
Eleven now.
Eleven years.
Wow.
Yeah, so, yeah, so...
He saved me one time, too.
If that had started school, eleven years, he'd be in the fifth grade, right?
Right. He took care of me one day, too, in a very scary situation.
Yeah.
He knows that I'm beholden to him.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to do this for you.
Thank you, Donnie.
Thank you.
And please.
We really appreciate you.
Well, thank you, guys.
Very much.
Thanks, Donnie.
All right.
You all have this document that we just put in there today.
Yeah, may I share?
You want to share?
Yes, if you don't mind.
You got it?
I'm sorry, it's so small, but you asked me in the last, I think, Mr. Burges?
It's me, yeah, it looks good.
You asked me to go through our Capitol, so we, Ms. Long and I went through everything today, just to make sure you, you understand what we have done and what we are doing as of July 1, this past July 1. So, let me start with the McCarg project. We had a progress meeting on, well, we had a scheduling meeting on last Friday, and the schedule has been readjusted to April 8 is the completion date on that. So they fully intend to have our teachers in by summer, June, so that we can move in. Actually, we'll start moving in before then, we'll start moving some furniture in, in April and May, and in some of the areas that are going to be completed before, Area D is taking the longest right now, and that is the kindergarten loop right there.
It's like the progress has been slow.
It has, they're low on steel again.
Oh, no.
So, it's, it's taken, but again, April 8 is, is a good completion date for us, and totally expecting to have our students there by the fall of 2022, when we go in August. But you can see there that, you know, we've had to make some, we've had to make some cuts, we haven't been able to allow some things that we initially wanted, and then we've also had to use some of our SRR2 funds and local funds to make sure that we stay on budget. So the first thing that we wanted you all to see is that the bipolar ionization, the additional re-roofing on the newer sections of, or the more renovated sections of McCarg, and then the furniture for all of McCarg are being paid out of SRR2 instead of the, instead of the loan that we have with the city. So...
Oh, good.
That's $51,000 for the bipolar ionization, $170 for the re-roofing, and then $412, that's split between about 200 in SRR2 funds, and then 212 of our Local Fund 5. How about questions on that?
Good.
No, it looks real good.
Okay. And then, of course, with the year-long, you know, addition to the schedule, we've had to rent out Grove for another additional year, and also had to grant, rent out the Bondurant for an additional year. Those, those are being paid out of the Local Fund 5, and those are $36,000 for the preschool, and that's a discounted rate that, that Ms. Slusher here has worked so hard on getting, and then the Bondurant rent is $18,000, and that Bondurant rental space is completely packed. We have no, no more room there for anything, so any questions on that?
Thank you for working to associate that price.
You're welcome. And there's still things in motion. I'm really not at liberty to say, because I don't want to break any confidences with people from one of these places that have been so gracious to help us, but we hope to get a little bit more grace here along the way.
As you all are aware, too, we've had some, with Radford being so cavernous, we've had issues with our parking lots in several other areas too. So we had some, we needed to, after 11 years, we needed to, or 10 years, we needed to, or I guess 11, 10 or 11 years, we needed to redo Bell Heath parking lot and repave it, and they also did some, there were some potholes that we had to fix, and that also came out of, that was front and back, and it looks really, really good. We used Donnie for that carry, right? And that's $26,000, that's already been paid, the, the ones above are all encumbered, that one's paid. And then, of course, with, with Bell Heath, 11, 10, 11, 12 years old, it was time for a software update for the HVAC, which means that our new maintenance person, Marcus Terry, will be monitoring that with new, with the new equipment, and that is, I couldn't believe that's $29,000, but we've been putting that off for two or three years, Stacy, right?
I'm hoping longer than that.
Well, we, we put it off for a long time before we had to do it, and then we're...
It was out of date five years in, you know, after the build.
Yeah.
So, we put it off five years ago.
Yeah. So, and that seems to be working pretty, pretty well.
They're going completed on the 18th.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And that was at Bell Heath, McCarg, and then to the high school now, where we're doing most of the HVAC stuff. And of course, we had to replace the broken unit that was in the administrative offices and the hallway lobby entrance there. And finally, that, I think, is there, Cam, correct, it's cooler there now?
It's hidden.
Okay.
That wasn't...
There's still some parts that they have to have there, but to replace that entire unit, the, the unit was shot, so it was not, it was not good anymore, is $63,000, and, or about $64,000, that's encumbered. And then, so we had the A&E fees for the book of, of, of projects that we wanted to do at John Dalton, Radford High School, and here at the school board office, which, if we listed that, it would be the air handling units at John Dalton in each of the classrooms, HVAC in the kitchen and cafeteria, the water lines for the kitchen and the culinary arts and science rooms, the air conditioning at the gymnasium and locker rooms, air conditioning at the King Center, air conditioning in the air handling units in the high school, upgrade in the science and locker rooms, and then air conditioning here, not, this is the only area, this is the only one that has central air conditioning, so it would be that. So the A&E fees for that document, which you all have seen, was, was $59,000.
May I interrupt you?
Yes, you can.
I'm assuming because of their quality during COVID, we are using the SRR money for that, is that correct?
For these, these projects?
Projects.
Yeah, these are all SRR 1, 2, and 3.
So that the public knows that is not local funds?
No, they're not, they're grant funds, and, and this one, the, the, kind of, the overall summary of everything, what we need, is the $59, $60,000 A&E fees, which is being paid out of SRR 1 and 2.
What are A&E fees exactly?
Architect and engineering fees, sorry.
Right, so, when I see, when I hear air conditioning, that's a lot more than what we're seeing here.
So it's the design process and then the construction?
Do we have the monies to actually do the performance?
That's what we need to, they're so high, Jody, right now, because of...
But I heard a jail bond.
Oh, yeah. So we're, we're starting with the most, with our priorities, and that's, right now, we're, we're involved with the cafeteria, and you can see the A&E fees for the cafeteria, the HVAC water line at the high school. We, we've completed Phase A of the water line, and that is...
25741.
Thank you, 257, and then we're on, we're, we just signed off to do Phase B. So the water line, the water line was, was so old, and pipes were, were just rusted completely through, so the water, they were in the cafeteria, in the science rooms, and the culinary arts room were, were dark and muddy. Not, not, they were fine as far as to use, but, so we have that going, Phase A and Phase B go all the way to the culinary arts room.
So the HVAC and water line improvements, the 746, is actually, to make those improvements...
That's designs, that's just the designs.
Okay.
The wa, the water line has been, the water line has been completed for Phase A, which is all the way out to, you know, where the dishroom is in the cafeteria? So the dishroom has, it's, there's a copper pipe right out there that they'll hook to to go to science and the culinary arts, and that's Phase B. In that $74,000 too, is the design for the AC for the kitchen and cafeteria as well.
Okay.
Along the lines with that, you can see, we've already ordered the HVAC equipment for the cafeteria and kitchen, and that is right at $95,000. Now, there's another unit that we have to order, and I can't remember the company that we have to order from, but it's about $11,000.
It's not the one that was part of the plumbing upgrades for Phase 2?
It may be, I, I can't remember that one, I, I think you're right.
I think there was one in...
I think you're right, yeah. So those, those, and I'm sorry, the Sunbelt rental is the, is the portable AC that we have in the kitchen right now for our cafeteria workers. And, and that, on a hot day, it's manageable, but on a, on a day like today, it's really, it's okay, it's nice. But on a hot day, it really is hard to, I mean, it's better than nothing, it's better than what they had last year, but it's still 85 degrees in there on a hot day. So that, those A&E fees from the $74,000 down to the plumbing upgrades, Phase B, are all one project. Y'all have any, any questions about those?
Thankful for the SRR funds.
I did that for kids who do this work.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And then we had carpet insulation, we had the same carpet in nine rooms that we'd had there probably for 20 to 30 years. It was old and smelly, and, you know, at, at times, it just don't think very safe for our, for our students, especially those who were having compromised asthma and things of that nature. So we were able to do that, it looks really good, for $26,000, that's a, that's a separate, and that was paid out of SRR 3. So that's another, another grant. You all know about our repair and resurfacing, I know Larry's here today, he's helped us reduce that price for the courts that we have. Right now, they are, they have done all the repair and crack work for the courts, they've put the sealant over top, they put a actual second coat of sealant over the cracked areas today, and then did some additional work, and then they're planning, I think they have a little bit more to do as far as the sealant goes tomorrow, and then they're putting the, the colors down. So that is $65,000. And then, we have the storm drainage issues outside of the cafeteria that we've talked about, and this is designed again, again alone, the architect and engineering fees from Thompson and Litton, I haven't signed off on this, so, because I wanted to get your all's thoughts on this too. It's $26,950, and that will provide us a design for, to get the, you know, where the drain is outside of the boys' locker room, and it's, has kind of gone down and sunk, and we're not sure about the pipe being, that goes from somewhere near the tennis courts all the way through our campus to Wildwood, and comes out the end of, of Wildwood. We think that that's got rocks and debris in it from being, so we're going to have to, I can't remember how they said it, blow that out?
Flush it out.
Flush it out, yeah, something like that. And there's a special piece of equipment that they have to use for that. And then as you go towards the back of that, where the, where our video production and machining, there's a sinkhole over there near the, well, near Wildwood, there's a break in the pipe where the drain is coming out, and it's emptying into our parking lot, causing the, the, the sinkhole. So there's a little bit of concern about the whole edge of Wildwood, where the parking lot is, falling off, so they're going to, they have the design in there to fix that and the sinkhole and the pipe, and the rocks and sediment and the drain, they're actually have to put a whole brand-new drain into the old drain. So that's the design fees.
So the $26,000 is just the fee for the architectural design, right?
That's just the architect and engineering fees, the construction.
If I'm seeing it correctly in my head, that's a huge area, correct?
So they gave us a very, very rough verbal estimate at about $60,000 to $70,000 for the construction.
Oh, boy.
So, so I guess...
Do that next year?
No, 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 we have to do that immediately.
Okay, all right.
So the design work alone in this list was $160,000?
That's correct.
Where, and maybe you've mentioned it, but the cost to actually do these projects, when will we see that?
Well, you have, you have the cost for the water lines, so that, you have A and B there.
Okay.
You, we don't, we need, have part of the cost for the train HVAC equipment at $100,000.
Where's that?
It's train HVAC equipment.
Okay, sorry, yeah, you said that.
For 95, 473. And then, we will get the estimates, the bids out for the estimates for the construction on that, although we do have a, we work with Guardian and Thompson and Litton and Extreme Contract, as they have a state contract.
For concrete work?
Yes, for the concrete work.
Is the plan to use the SIR funding to fund those projects?
The SIR funds, and there's also the, Ellen and I will have to write the grant for the ventilation funds here by November fifteenth.
Is any of this connected to where we had the issue with cafeteria?
As far as-
The breaking of the pipe there?
Oh, yes. It's all connected because, so we did the resitivity study with, with Dr. Watson and Dr. Herman, and there's-
I think that's important for you to, to tell, that we've had local people that have shared their expertise.
Yes, we have.
They're nationally known, which-
And we had Marty Woodard and Brendan Fisher, and then also Marty brought a very experienced colleague in, in geography and especially caverns and things of that nature. And it's, there's just a lot of wetness underneath our, and not just the high school, it's everywhere in Rafford really. It's just a very cavernous city.
Right.
Whenever you have, you know, water underground that's, you know, moving and there's breakage and things of that nature, it just makes for a very unstable, unstable ground. So the good news is, the initial thought, when they looked at the resitivity study with Brendan and Marty and those guys, before they were able to meet with us there, they were worried that we would have to tear up the entire back parking lot.
That's where I kind of was going. That's why I-
Part of this, part of this A and E fees is with, for the stormwater drainage is, is us working with those guys, Thompson and Litten working with those guys. And, and they all came together and thought that once we make these repairs, it's good to just monitor that site, to make sure that, you know, they feel comfortable if we just make these repairs and monitor it, that it's very safe. We could even bring buses and things of that nature. We don't, we can bring, we don't really want to bring our eighteen-wheelers down there again, but we could bring buses and cars and things. But I think we're so happy with, with having it clear without any cars there, because it's, you leave it there. But these will have to be, these will have to be fixed. And then part of that A and E fee is a drone system that they, that Thompson and Litten has that will monitor the entire site. Drone will fly over. It's a special, specialized drone that monitors the rise and lowering of ground. And so that'll, it'll fly over there and-
They do that for some surveying.
Yeah, a little survey.
So I, I guess I'm not understanding. So all the projects listed here, here are the fees and design fees, there's more money that has to be spent to finish these projects?
A lot more.
Right. I, I guess, I'm, how, we don't know exactly how much. When would we see that? Because when I, and the reason I ask, when I hear air conditioning in gym, I think of a million-dollar price tag, which probably isn't that far off.
The, so they're in the process of trying to find out how much that's gonna be.
Okay.
And we're working with train, and we're working with Extreme Contracting and a bunch of, of others to see. So that should be coming. The goal is to have that project completed by the time we return after winter break.
Okay. And all of that-
You should know that by December, I would think.
Okay, perfect. And, and we're thinking SIR money plus maybe another grant. We'll have that covered outside of local funding?
Well, we, so we've committed to the SIR funds for these projects right here, but we could also use the ventilation money, which is about six hundred thousand dollars, I believe.
Somewhere between.
Six hundred to help with the gym.
Okay.
So it'll be, it'll be the cafeteria, kitchen, then the gym and locker rooms, and then we're gonna see how much money we have left.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Y'all remember, the Partners Foundation is not actively fundraising for the gym like we were. We backed off with food insecurities and things like that. But that is an, an ongoing project to help raise money. We have some money now, but hopefully that'll pick back up soon.
Okay.
With the SIR funds, is, do we know how much there is left in those pots to, that we have to spend?
We're in good shape right now.
Okay.
I just worry about how much it's gonna, the actual construction cost is gonna be.
Right.
And then what is the price of the A and E fees gonna be for the gym?
That's my concern, moving on and whether the deadlines are to have it spent, and is there any hope of getting any more SIR funds or because of-
I don't think there's any, any, any hope of getting any SIR funds. I think there may be some hope of getting some infrastructure funds that legislation is putting, is pushing forward for. Some of those things that she's seen that Dr. Perrigen has been writing, and we're getting a lot of, a lot of feedback from that, because we're actually in pretty good shape as a school in southwest Virginia. There's, there's schools that, so we, we had a, we had a visit yesterday from a superintendent and staff in Kingsport, Tennessee, Dobbins-Bennett High School. They're, they're having to re-roof their entire high school at, at about, what'd they say, six point five million? So we're hopeful that, in talking with Thompson and Litten, I think we can, we can get the, the cafeteria, kitchen, the gym, and possibly the science labs, is what we're hoping out of this money.
You know, here's what I'm struck by, is that, I don't know, we're losing track of time, but two years ago or whenever it was, it was, we kind of got told, oh, you're just wanting money for a facelift at the high school. And we all knew that it wasn't a facelift. And so while we've had to spend a lot of money with Thompson and Litten, we had to have those plans to be able to really specify the extent of our needs. And as always, when we think about the fact that we try to put aside some money for these things, who would have anticipated some of the things that are on this list right now and have risen to the top? So I think it's tremendous that we're, you have put grant monies together and SIR monies together to be able to get this level.
Well, and, and I, I need the community, or we need the community to understand that this is a drop in the bucket. I mean, this, this is, this is just HVAC. You know, we're one of the few in the New River Valley that don't have air conditioning in our schools, especially in places where we test or where we do athletics or things of that nature. But our bathrooms need to be redone, our, our east wing needs to be completely redone, the floors need to be redone, the classrooms need to be upgraded. I mean, I think Carrie and I looked at a potential close to twenty million dollars of needs still. I think with the, you know, when we look at the two thousand fifteen study, we've done a lot.
Yes, yes.
But we still need a lot more money to, the upstairs, the, the upstairs is, is not handicap accessible.
Right.
The gym is not handicap accessible. The bleachers in the gym are old and, and unsafe. But the minute you try to modify the gym, then you have to do everything to make it ADA compliant. Same thing with, with the, the Arnhem. The Arnhem is a wonderful building that we need to pour a ton of money into, and, and we need the space.
Yep.
So, but we're doing, you know, we're trying to do the best that we can with, with the money that we have right now.
Here, I'll take it. That's yours.
So I have a copy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for putting this together. I, I think it was, yeah, I think, I think it's really good to see this, and I think for the city council, those first few lines, of course, when they say, well, you know this conversation. I think it's good to have it in writing and on paper, so thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
I got one, I got a question.
Sure.
And this relates to this. If we move in on April the eighth, how many, how long are we past, what, how late is that to the original?
Well, we were supposed to, we were supposed to be, have a completion date by the end of October originally.
So on, in the last meeting, I saved this, and you can talk to Jack about this-
Sure.
And see what he says. But I know we're, we had a penalty clause in there, and we're, I'm not saying we need to use that. It would, it wouldn't help us any to use that.
No.
So I'm, I'm good with that.
Well, he, he, he has, he has that card to play.
That's what I'm saying. We've got that.
Because the April eighth, the April eighth date is it.
Yeah, and it was pretty steep per day if you didn't get in there.
It is.
This is what I'm thinking. Y'all can think about this, and you can talk to Jack. Would we have incurred Grove Rent and Bondurant Storage if we'd been on time?
No, that's what's costing us the four.
Not only that, not only that, Lynn, it's sixteen thousand dollars for the modular units.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm coming to. This is from last time, and it says, additional units, hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Well, that's, that price is, that's an old copy. There, I need to get you a newer copy.
But I think we should get Jack to talk to the contractor.
He's gonna ask for some of that money.
I think they need to pay for that.
I think you're right.
I mean, it's, it's not hurting, it's hurting us financially. We can deal with, with it being late, y'all are right on this. We'll just move. But when it, we have to start paying thirty-six thousand dollars for something that we didn't do, and then another hundred and twelve plus.
That's why we had to add the, the furniture. We had not planned, and the furniture was part of the F and E of the contract.
So you see what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
If Jack's, if he could look at that and let us know, I think it would, I think the contractor should have to help us out with that.
Okay.
And if, like, to your point, if it's not the total amount, whatever that is per day, I don't remember, I'm looking at the same one, but whatever it was per day, this is probably not that entire amount. So-
Not a lot compared to that.
To offset it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he has, he has definitely some grounds to negotiate for sure. Because that's contractual, that's all contractual, right?
And then, if I recall, I don't have my notes from my last meeting, because I accidentally left them at home. He negotiated with them as far as the number of days, and we got that reduced, correct?
Yeah, and, and what, what I, what you have to account for too in a contract like that, because it's written in, in one of the clauses, is, is rain, days that aren't conducive to construction, snow. Nobody can do really anything about the delay in, in the equipment and materials, or nobody can really do anything about the lack of employment or the lack of people who want to help.
Yeah.
Or the delay because of COVID. So we're, we're discussing it, but I'll, I'll definitely ask him about that.
I'm good with that.
And then y'all have the attendance report, and the only thing that really has changed on this and, and really proud of our, I mean, we're, we're ninety-four percent at every school, which is great. Our virtual membership did decline a little bit. We're right at about the number that we had planned on being at now. It'll, it'll continue to go down. We do have, we've, we've had about ten students who have decided to return to in-person learning. The virtual is just not a fit for them, so that'll, that'll continue to drop a little bit. Wanted to make you aware of something that Dr. Colley is working on, and really appreciate her expertise with this. But we're trying to make protocol for various things with our student code of conduct. One of those is a first-time offenders program that we have, and I've mentioned this to you all before, and we have, or in the process of, we, we're using, we've used it twice now. And anytime a student is found with, with drugs on campus or selling drugs or involved in any type of, of drug activity, and they haven't had any other prior convictions or anything like that, they will go through our first-time offenders program. And where they'll be, they'll meet with the administration, the parents have to meet with them. The students will be suspended out of school for five days. They'll be over here at the Bridge Program for five days. They will have to do mandatory substance abuse program through New River Valley Community Services. They have to complete ten hours of community service. And then if they don't meet any of the, any of the requirements, they will come in front of you all for a recommendation of expulsion. If they do meet all those things and they, they move back into the regular school setting and continue with, with, and so we've had success with this thus far. So, and can it help me here, because I know you're creating a ton of them. I know weapons of protocol you're doing.
Vaping, we're readdressing the vaping.
Vaping, also disruption and disrespect. And I think there's, there's one other. So when we get those protocols, we'll bring them to you to share with you. And I think you all will probably need to approve those.
So it's, when you went through that, and you don't have to read the list, for drugs, just as that example, it's five days OSS, and then they have to meet these other things.
Correct.
And if they don't, we're jumping from five days straight to expulsion.
Yes.
If one of those five things aren't met.
That's right.
Okay.
It would be a recommendation, not, we, we can't, I can't.
No, no, I understand. It comes in front of the boards, what you mean, yeah.
To you all, yes.
So is this separate from the, the sort of new PBIS after-school?
It's gonna be part of the PBIS. No, no, so that the, yeah, that's, I'm glad you asked that. So this is, so all this falls under the Positive Behavior Intervention System. These are protocols that we should have had in place for a long time. And I'm glad that, and, and I want you all to know that every incident is different. So we'll have to treat every incident differently too. But this will be the basis of, of what we try to do.
Can we have a copy of that?
Yeah. And, and here's the, here's the sheet. Can you make a copy of that for them, Carrie, please? And it has the-
Just hang on to that, we'll get a copy soon.
So-
Thank you, Carrie.
Why don't you explain the junior Bobcat Connection and Bobcat Connection?
Sure. The Junior Bobcat Connection is a program that's at the elementary school that was formerly, before COVID, our Beans and Rice program. It's based on the Twenty-First Century Grant. Beans and Rice Incorporated wrote the grant, received the money from the federal government, and then we, as a school district, had to be the physical manager. So during COVID, Beans and Rice contacted us and said they just didn't have the staff to continue the program with us, that we would have to take the grant or drop the grant. And we decided to take the grant and not lose that money, because they offered a fourth year. So we created basically a program that was very much like Beans and Rice. We call it Junior Bobcats Connection now, because Beans and Rice is not a part of the program. So we call it Junior, Junior Bobcat Connections. It is an after-school program. Right now, we have over a hundred and ten applications in, a hundred and ten participants, maybe even more than that. They don't participate in that large of a number every day, but they can. So J.C. Hamilton is the coordinator of that program. Rafford City Schools wrote the grant. We received the money, we managed the money. Most of the funding goes toward the wonderful certified teachers that work that every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday afternoon. And we have lots of, we have some paraprofessionals who are also working the program. And again, J.C. is the coordinator. It's going very well. We are running it full day next Thursday and Friday. For those members, those children who are participating in the program, they can come all day when schools are closed due to professional development. We won't run the program from three to five that afternoon. We're running it during the day and have paraprofessionals working it. The reason we don't do it in the afternoon is because our teachers are in professional development. And so it's more difficult. So again, that's based on the Twenty-First Century Grant.
That's a junior.
That's a junior version. That's a junior Bobcat Connection program. And what are they doing, what are they- It is kindergarten through sixth grade. And so what are they doing during that program? So during that program, it's, it can be a center rotation, where they could be working in small groups with other kids during, doing, for lack of a better word, you know, art activities, STEM activities, things like that. But there is an element of tutoring because of the certified teachers that work it, that they, they rotate through tutoring. And it's on a, a rotation system, much like, if anybody knows, like, running children to centers to manage the large numbers. They've made some adjustments of grouping, and I think they've done a lot of communication. I, I think it's actually run probably better than we ever ran it before. And having our coordinator work with us has been wonderful. And they have a great connection to, you know, transportation, paraprofessionals, all of us. J.C.'s done a great job, and, and so have those teachers that work the program. So again, some of the kids, a lot of the kids will get the one-on-one or small group tutoring, but they're also doing other things, snack, arts and crafts, STEM activities, and that nature. And again, that's the Junior Bobcat K through six held at Bell Heath Elementary. When we rewrite the grant, we'll write it then for two centers, because McCarg will have its own program. Right. One coordinator, but two centers. So that will be next year, hopefully, when we write that grant. Again, that's based on the Twenty-First Century Grant. So the Bobcat Connection, that, the money that funds that program is from-
Can I, so sorry to interrupt you.
That's all right.
Before you leave the Junior Bobcats, who determines who is tutored?
The teachers and, yeah, the teachers.
And J.C. helps with that process.
So they recommend?
So J.C. does a great job with communicating with the teachers over there, and those teachers at Tutor do as well. And there's just, I, we don't dictate how that works. Those teachers that are involved in that program, and J.C. and those pairs, they're the ones that are really kind of leading the charge there, knowing who needs this or that. They're also using some of our computer programs there as well. We do Reflex and Lexia Reading, Reflex Math, Lexia Reading, getting ready to look at a program called Dreambox for math as well, for another resource that they can use after school, working on those programs a certain minutes a day.
Yeah. I would like to hear from, at some point this year, don't worry.
From J.C.?
Yes.
That'd be great. That'd be great, I'll invite him to be here.
I would like to that, and I'd also like to hear some student feedback on.
We can do that, that'd be awesome.
Hear how the kids feel about it.
So the Bobcat Connections, again, is a program for the middle and secondary schools. So Dalton and Bradford High School. It is funded by ESAR III. ESAR III is written with a stipulation that twenty percent of the total allocation to your division has to be for instructional purposes. So that, the money that funds Bobcat Connections is from ESAR III. And that is for after-school tutoring. It can serve students who are struggling in English that a teacher recommends to come after school to receive some tutoring. It also can serve students who have a drug violation, or a weapons, or a discipline violation, that they would receive some type of consequence that has to do with removal, but they would come back in the afternoon to receive instruction that they could have missed during the day.
Okay.
Actually, though, I had a conversation with both Mrs. Grant and Mr. Freeman today. When we do our data days next week, we're really going to look at Bobcat Connections and maybe some other out-of-the-box ideas on how to reach students. We have to remember, we're asking certified teachers to do a lot of this. And it's not an easy thing for a teacher to teach seven and a half hours and then give two more hours to instruction. I mean, it, you know, I know it seems like it's just another teaching position, but it's much like, you know, it's a lot, like a lot of other organizations, that when you're really, kind of the sage on the stage, you're really that person kind of conducting and leading and, and working, it's just nine-hour days, eight-hour days. They're very hard on people that, that do that day in and day out. Like I said, I commend, there's a team of fifth-grade teachers that need recognition because they do that Bobcat, Junior Bobcat Connection at Bell Heath like champs. We've got some teachers that have said they would do some of the tutoring at Bobcat Connections, but I, I really think we need to look at a different way to reach more students than just after-school. And so I, we're going to meet and talk about that next week and talk with the faculty to see if they have some ideas on how we could do that and make it easier for those people who think, well, I could do it in this, in this way at this time. It's just, it's a lot to say, stay two more hours, let's keep students. Even the student is tired. Because we have to remember, coming off that pandemic, this stamina is just not there right now for lots of us. And, and so we're looking at different ways. But that Bobcat Connection is really to hold kids up in those academic environments, keep that instruction coming, keep that achievement rising after-school or through another, through another means. So again, we're, we're still pondering that one a little bit.
Just one question, have you, colleges can be so small, but have you thought about peer tutoring?
We have thought about offering paid to college students to come and participate in tutoring, much like, I think that the Math Emporium, like at Tech, does a lot of that. So we, we've talked a little bit about that. We've talked about math hotlines and people actually manning the math hotlines at home. Like a teacher would be at home with a math hotline phone, that they say, you know, I might, I'll give you an hour tonight and I'll man the hotline. Student that calls in that has a question with math, math homework, you know, we've talked a little bit about that. We're really looking for different kind of ideas through the Bobcat Connections program to serve our students in a variety of different ways.
And just to be clear, because there seems to be a little bit of confusion or maybe misunderstanding in the community, the Bobcat, these programs are meant to be positive, not punitive in nature. And for example, with the Senior Bobcat Connections Program, if we have a student that we have to suspend for some reason out of school, this is a program that we can use, so they don't have to be suspended. They still be, they still would come, count as a, it'd still count as a day of attendance for them, and they would be getting the, the instruction that they would miss being out of school suspended. And this is all part of, and this is a really good connection, speaking of connections, this is all part of the Positive Behavior Intervention Support System that we're trying to put in, which Kenna is leading, and I wanted her to spend some time talking to you, not only about the Positive Behavior Intervention Support System. And, and we are trying to really be positive with our discipline and trying to make really good connections. Our, our staff is wonderful at building relationships with students. But she can also mention a little bit of the Bobcat Bridge too in here as well, as that's a program that she's been. But again, this is all supposed to be positive, not punitive for, for our children. Yes, please.
Thank you. So thank you, I just have about, is it working?
You can watch just to get the rest of the files.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of slides, just for some information, and then we can have a discussion. So school-wide positive behavior intervention supports probably in the year twenty-five to thirty in actual implementation and practice in the United States. I want to present.
Yes, I was trying to, I can't grab it sideways.
I can't even see it.
There it is.
Thank you. So it's research-based framework that's been around for a while for implementing school-wide systems of behavioral support in a tiered continuum based on student responsiveness to intervention. It's that we expect to have intervention to support students both academically and behaviorally and help prevent and reduce undesired behaviors, or what we typically could call misbehaviors or target behaviors, and improve social and academic behavior outcomes for all students in the school. This was really built around a model of public schools. So typically, we stole this from the medical model. This is a triage from a medical model, and with doing that, it typically falls out in the same fashion with behavior. So it's kind of a continuum of school-wide instruction and support based on students. So for our students, the first level of support would be primary prevention is for all students. And with the school-wide, that's really looking at school-wide and classroom-wide, that all children are there, all staff, all settings would be, be provided to a hundred percent of the students. So that could be rules and expectations, that could be visuals, that's teaching routines, that's reinforcing, that's the positive referrals that Ms. Lincoln Hoker talked about. So just a lot of different things goes into this. And then we're, and we're usually looking at, that's a hundred percent. When we're looking at secondary preventions, we're typically looking at about ten, fifteen, eighteen percent of a specialized group of students who have some at-risk behaviors. Those could be small group, those could be extra counseling, they could be different levels of wraparound, they could be extra teaching of some of the expectations that the school has. And then we always would have students, obviously, in the top bar triangle, three, five, seven percent, depending on if you're rural, urban, but looking at real specialized, individualized systems for students with higher-risk behaviors. And once again, this was designed for public schools where all students get to come in our community. So, and this typically falls out the same in most school systems. So it's a division-wide approach. So this year, we're really looking, and we have the great opportunity of having a lot of new administrators in all the buildings, whether they were new or recycled administrators in a different building, that they're starting it all at the same time. We're looking at this, these expectations pre-K through twelve. So it's a division-wide approach to creating more structure, more caring, and more teaching approach to discipline for school-wide expectations. Where everyone lives under the world of safe, respectful, and peaceful. That can easily go into any workplace or community because that's the same expectations that we would want everywhere. We're working in very close coordination with the Bobcat Bridge Alternative Learning Environment for daily decision-making, and that supports our students with both academic instruction and some discipline and reteaching, reflection, and some counseling. And we will start using Panorama, which is a new system. We have just did, have conducted student surveys, we're still conducting them. This is also a system that provides a whole host of things for socio-emotional materials and learning for our pre-K through twelve educators. So they have that whole host of menu of lots of different materials, lesson plans that they can use. And then also, it will help us to track student data and response to intervention tracking. So our, we have a lot of overlapping initiatives, and I did do a crosswalk for this to really look at how really interwoven all of this is that we're doing. School-wide positive behavior supports, trauma-sensitive schools, we did a lot of PD for that last year, and we continue to. Division-wide Equity Leadership Team, that's new. We're only looking at a leadership team this year, which is representatives from across schools to start to look at a lot of the equity work that we will be tackling forever. You never stop working on equity. Response to Intervention, we got that kicked off last year. That actually falls under a two thousand four federal law. It's actually a general education process, but it's really scooping up students who are having literacy issues, mathematics issues, behavior issues, truancy issues. We kind of use Response to Intervention because Bradford City Schools is so small to really look at things like truancy, to look at students with mental health issues, to look at academic issues, failing grades, behavioral issues, lots of different things from pre-K through twelve, and we have RTI teams and facilitators at all schools. And to date, I pulled data to date, to date, we've had twenty, as of October twelfth, this is pretty impressive, we've had twenty-six separate meetings, RTI meetings already. So we've been busy, and that's across all of the schools. And then socio-emotional learning resources and practices, trying to embed those as much as possible. Those don't just belong to school counselors and our NRVCS counselors. It's really looking at a holistic approach that we all need to be looking at socio-emotional learning opportunities. And then instructional practices and support, you can't separate behavior and academics or instruction. They have to be meshed together and hand in hand. So we've looked at Bobcat Connections, Bobcat Bridge, Junior Bobcat Connections. We've been able to get additional title teachers, a literacy coach, software content resources, starting with Mastery Connect this year, additional school counselor, additional assistant principals, grade-level instructional assistants, academic coaching, and ongoing professional development. All of those are extremely important when we're looking at school-wide positive behavior supports. So as of today, just, this is, these are just some updates. I'm not going to go school by school and tell you where, exactly where they are and all of their accomplishments, because I could be here for quite a while. We are using the Florida PBIS Benchmarks Equality Framework. It's evidence-based, and it also came out of the Center for Positive Behavior Supports. That was all, it's been funded over the years with lots of federal money. The reason we are not using our Virginia Department of Education's framework is they only let it out a little at a time if you're in their cohort. Otherwise, they won't share it. So you have to be part of one of their cohorts. They're currently not taking new cohorts. It's not that their information is bad, but it's also very, very scripted, and you have to move at their pace. So very similar framework, but Florida was also one of the first states that got the big federal dissemination money with a lot of very famous people in the field of positive behavior supports. There's teams at all four schools that are facilitating this process. We have co-chairs at the schools. All schools are building these practices and working on creating unified cultures. It's going to take a lot of time. It's not something you build and expect to work perfectly. Lot more restorative practices and community services being put in place for kids. And restorative practices are really, it just, they're just so creative in how people are using those and how the impact of relationships that they are having and the reflection on children's behavior. We're collaborating, obviously, with Bradford University and our, with mostly T-TAC, the Training and Technical Assistance Center, and our VCS, and outside and internal consultants. So we have pulled in some outside consultants around certain kids or certain groups of kids, and then we've also used internal consultants that we have in-house. Next steps, I'm having a joyful time with our student focus groups. It's really great because they don't really know me, and it's really fun. They'll, they'll tell me everything, so about school-wide PBIS, so just meeting with kids at lunch. Just been doing Dalton right now, then I'll move to the high school. It's really rich, good information about how kids think because we are all adults and we can't get into their heads to say, well, what do you think about this, or what do you think about this? And it's going to be great information, and they love to talk, and I do bring chocolate. Community involvement, we will definitely involve community members in this, is always a piece of that, where we would open up also some focus group with families or activities in our community to really give us some information. We're monitoring disciplinary data as well as academic progress all the time. So I have disciplinary data, also I have data for, keep active data for Bobcat Bridge, especially when it comes for both academics and discipline.
Can you say that thing about time one more time?
About?
About time as far as implementation of a program like this?
This takes years and years and years. You're building a culture, and it's really, you're building practices, you're building new ways of looking at data and assessment. You're looking at new ways of teaching. And you're really, I mean, it's a change of culture. And for, it's a change of culture for, for children, students, and adults. So it really is, it's an opportune time coming. We're not out of COVID, as you all know, with masks on, but with this, we are, you know, in a time where last year, when we worked on trauma-sensitive practices, and will continue to, COVID has brought a tremendous amount of trauma to all communities in the United States, and we, we are in that same place.
What kind of questions y'all have?
I'd like to go, go around, because I'm sure there'll be a lot, ask a question.
I'll keep thinking, you go around.
I'm actually going to bring it, I'm going to come back over here to this policy, which I know is a part of PBIS. This is something that is also an area of expertise for me. And I feel very strongly about how important this is and how proud I am of this division for putting this in place. Schools, there's tons of research out there about the school-to-prison pipeline and research on what happens to those children that we start suspending in elementary school and up. And, and the school-to-prison pipeline is very real. And, and punishment is not the answer. And so I'm, I'm thrilled to see this because there is this misconception that because we're calling it positive behavior support with an emphasis on positive and support, that there are no consequences for children. And, and that's false. That is false. The three tiers, or the three, I won't use tiers, the three parts are that you try to prevent behavior, and the biggest part is that you try to teach children what you want them to do. You know, how to self-regulate, how to, to act instead of acting out. And, and then the third part of it is always consequences, which, which we try to be as natural as possible, but that we're on the same page about those consequences. So I'm, I just wanted to speak in support of this, to say that yes, it's going to take years and years, but I also think that this is one of those things that we shouldn't judge its success after, you know, one marking period, that I think we're going to see some success after one year, and then we're going to see even more success after two years. And by three years, I think we're going to show a tremendous amount of success, although we still have a lot, we're going to have a lot of growing to do and a lot of learning. So.
We have lots of successes already.
Well, there you go.
I mean, we can easily see that, like morning meetings, that the community, like, we've done trainings with all of McCargill and Bell Heath for morning meetings. The teachers are implementing them. It's one of the strongest research pieces, it was actually UVA did the research on it, of building community safety and belonging in classrooms and starting children's day out that way. And I'm, I'm just seeing amazing examples when I'm in the schools of teachers using morning meetings. So that's just like one example, because we have to think, school, it's school, classroom, and individual child. We have to think all the time of going back and forth between all of those.
Okay, do you have some? I'm still thinking.
I'm good.
You did good.
Thank you.
I have a lot of questions, but I won't ask them all right now. I do have some experience with PBIS, like you were saying, it's been around a long time. I can be very honest, I don't know that I support it, I understand, but I also think it, I think we have to see where it goes, obviously. Can we afford to take years for it to change the culture, I guess is my biggest question.
Can we afford not to would be my response in a respectful way. And I think, you know, I guess with, you know, I would be really interested from, from your experience with it, why you wouldn't support it because that's what we always need to learn is what is it that people, do we need more education on it, do we need more understanding, you know, do we need more resources? And that's what I'd love to provide. Like every time there's public comments here, you know, about anything, whether, no matter what it is, I try to write them down and go back and find the research or find the practices that are working, so.
So I guess you made a, said a couple of words, positive, not punitive. One of my expectations is positive or punitive, I want to make sure it's appropriate, whatever that consequence is. And I think there are multiple appropriate consequences for things. So I'm not, I'm not saying suspension's always the answer, but I do believe suspension can, can be the answer depending on what, what, we have something here saying they're going to be five days out, that's an example.
Yep.
I guess I want to see, I want to watch it. I'd love to see the discipline data that you referred to.
So today, as of today, if we're talking out of school suspensions and that's part of the data we're looking at, but we'll disaggregate it by who those students are, we still have high numbers of black and brown students, we still have high numbers of students with disabilities, which our whole country's struggling with, that same data and that's what we have to look at. And we have to look at age of students and developmentally appropriate practices. So we have 16 suspensions as of October 12th, 2021, eight at Bell Heath, five at Dalton, three at Bradford High School, and six at McCarg. And when we're looking at that, we also have to understand that Bobcat Bridge is used only for Dalton and Bradford High School. So you have to think about the idea of Bobcat Bridge, and I didn't need to derail and go off on things because I know you're asking the questions, but is to really look at not missing academics, being able to also provide some of that counseling. We have an extra counselor at the high school who's really looking at that reflection of behavior and that reteaching. And then we're also looking at what we do out here with the students when they come. So because it, it can be a, it can be a really, I don't know if the word double whammy is the right idea, but if a student is at home for five days without resources and support or maybe in a home without resources and supports, they not only miss a tremendous amount of instruction, they're getting no instruction of how to change their behavior, how to reflect on their behavior, how to possibly address their counseling needs or mental health needs, or appropriate instruction of what safe, peaceful, and respectful might look like. So sometimes we, it's not that suspension's completely off the table, but a lot of times, you know, I don't, I shouldn't say this in jest, but our students got very, very good at vaping over COVID, okay? It was a support, it's an addiction, it's a support many of them saw as supportive in their life, they were home a lot of times alone. I'm not saying I think vaping is a good idea for any child because it causes very serious lung diseases we don't know about, but it's also something we have to address and of like, well, I don't want to send them home to vape more. And I'm not saying there shouldn't be consequences, but there's got to be an instructional component there of these are, it's not only economically terrible for them, it's terrible for their health, it's terrible for, you can't smoke in workplaces. You know, there's so many things that as young people, they need to learn and it's illegal at their age.
So let's use that as an example, I guess. So if a student is caught vaping, who is, I don't guess the age would matter, if it's illegal, say they're 17, I mean, I don't guess the age matters. Who, who is, who makes the decision, or is there a, do we have a policy about vaping since it's illegal? And I'm sure a protocol is coming, you, you mentioned earlier, but is it in the principal's hands?
Well, we're following a protocol right now, we just haven't had it written for you, but Kenna can tell you what it is.
Yeah, so we have, it's an educational protocol that also involves obviously confiscating, bringing parents in, and then going through different educational modules and then a counseling piece. So when we, we look at first offense, we look at second offense, we look at, I mean, you have to look at how is this impacting their lives and, you know, that, if, if we went back to a policy of just saying five days out of school for vaping, you know, and you have, you have three different offenses, number one, we're not addressing the behavior, but it's 15 days out of school with no instruction. And so we really are, if you fall behind academically, you're at much greater risk of not being successful in school. And so we're really trying to address that and to take an academic approach to teaching, teaching young students, you know, everything about vaping, they need to know that of why it's, it's not a good idea. Actually Stanford has a really good curriculum that we've been using and we've been using their videos to teach it. And, you know, it's just one part of it. Obviously families are in and obviously we've worked on this with our resource officer.
Yeah, so that was my next question, what about the legal piece of it? We're talking about something that's illegal in society.
Yeah.
So how do we handle that piece in the schools? Is THAD brought in immediately because it's against the law or who, who makes that decision?
Not immediately, but he is aware of our process and he's worked with our principals on that. And we're really testing it, you know, testing it out. It's number one, would people say vaping right now is an epidemic among teenagers? They could, you know.
But it's still illegal.
It is, right. And so, and that's something we do wrestle with quite a bit. It's not that we're saying we want anybody to break the law, but at the same time, people aren't going to change behavior just because you tell them to.
Do we make a decision in the school if something's illegal or do we have to notify the resource officer?
We have to notify the SRO and the police if it's weapon-related threat or drugs, meaning...
Is vaping considered a drug?
Yeah, but we don't notify them.
It's considered tobacco.
Which is...
Okay. I don't want to get into weeds about vaping, it's just, you brought it up, so I thought that's probably, probably a good example of what we've dealt with.
It is, yeah, it is. It's one of our highest offenses.
One of the things that we have to be, that Kenna and Daniel are working on too, is before the pandemic hit, we were one of five divisions that were seen as a division that oversuspends and we were written up for it. So we are, that, that's part of the concern that we have about out-of-school suspensions too. Luckily, when the pandemic hit, that, that, that report went away, but it is, I know they're monitoring it now with the BDOE and bringing that back up. So hopefully our suspension rate will not be seen as one of the top five in the state. Was that for, that was for Brown and?
2018, that was a 2018.
2018 for, was it, was it for sped or was it for black students or was it for?
It was black, brown, and students with disabilities.
Yeah, that's what it was. And we were for.
And we were cited on all of them.
Yeah.
I have a, more of a, I guess, a comment than a, than a question. I too wrestle with what children doing and I'm trying to get in a good mindset of the trauma that has occurred in our communities, not keeping us out of the loop. We're right in there with the national as well. I'm old school in the sense that the lights came on for me as a, as a teacher when I was introduced and you're probably, both of you two will know what I'm talking about and maybe you guys, I was changed forever with William Glasser and Quality Schools Movement. And I was very, very lucky that I went to national training on it and it was kind of my thing, went as far as Texas for it. And I saw great, great progress in my room, but at the same time, because of my age, I understand not only teachers, but our community, well, there's, kids just don't have consequences anymore. And I still hear it, I still hear it about Bradford City Schools. So I wrestle with that, but then I go back and I look at research, which to me is the only thing you can look at, what does work? And I struggle with answers for our community. The only thing that I found that has worked is we need to change the paradigm. Do you want to punish or do you want to change behavior? That was the change behavior light that came on with me. I understand kind of where he's coming from because I think it's, as Dr. Altieri said, this is going to be years in the making, can we, can we hang on? But at the same time, if the other isn't working, we've got to change the paradigm. And I'm very interested in following the data on this.
The punishment piece is really a great thing to study and to look at, but you know, we, we do have very overcrowded prisons with most repeat offenders, so that's one piece in our society that you could look at very separately. But the other pieces is that punishment looks different depending on the child.
Yes.
The family, the situation, the ability, the disability, the race, the resources at home. So, so a lot of students, and I've worked with many students who in schools that have high suspension rates, they can get suspended in the first five minutes because they're very good at it. Because at home, they can play Xbox, they can eat Doritos, they have no, no annoying teachers in their faces, and I don't really call that punishment. And it's because there, our society is, everybody gets to come and everybody comes from very, very different places. And if you've got two working parents and each of them are working two to three jobs and you have, you know, a nine-year-old at home by themselves, which legally they're allowed to be, you know, that can sometimes be the case. And sometimes we're putting kids in danger, sometimes by them being at home alone in situations like that, without the resources and support. And, you know, a lot of us around here would have the ability to probably have a great impact on our own children if they got suspended because of the resources we have, including the education we have.
Right.
So for how we might react could be very different than, than some families.
Is that taken into account? Because like you said, suspension may be appropriate for one child but not the other depending on the situation at home.
Sure, sure. Or the, or what the offense is.
So if the offense is vaping for one child and not the other, and let's say it was three days out at one point, whatever it was, I don't know what it was, so do we take into account the home life of the child, whether we choose three days out or something else based on like what you just said?
Right now, we're being very consistent with the vaping and we're trying to really keep a protocol together that's really consistent across students because you also have to look at that, study that as an offense. And it is an illegal offense, but you also have to look at the impact on the students that it's having. We really would love for children to never vape again because it is highly addictive, it's very expensive, it's ruining their health. And I don't know if you all remember, but vaping was huge right before the pandemic hit. I mean, the articles and the news and everything was nothing but this terrible lung disease that children are getting from vaping. And so that, the health impact is tremendous. So yeah, we would, for some things, we would be very consistent with that protocol.
Okay. Anybody else?
So I had just a, a couple of questions. So you said that the, the bridge program is just for DAS, RHS. Is there a junior bridge in the plan for our younger students who need some sort of an in-school suspension that could still be educational enrichment, safety, in-house?
Right, so it would look probably very different because of their age and we want to do developmentally appropriate practices.
Of course.
We are really not looking at it at a separate location, we're looking at really individualized per student and looking at their individual behavior.
So are they doing that at Bell Heath-McCarg now? Like are they doing in-school suspension, are they?
It's modified, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it in-school suspension.
Whatever, whatever.
Are we doing individualized practices for kids? Yes, we are. And it could be restorative practices, it could be separation, it could be the old principal's office, you know, it could be, you know, calling in parents the last period of the day and really having a session together with the student. I mean, there's a wide variety of things that they're using.
Okay.
And we do have a lot of students, so under the law, students with disabilities, sadly they say it has to be after 10 days of suspension that you'd start an FBA BIP. We don't really believe you should wait 10 days, so we will put that in practice for students with disabilities, but as best practice, we've been doing functional behavior assessment and behavior intervention plan for students with and without disabilities. Those that are in that top tier and you're always going to have top-tier kids in every building.
And just another question about the after-school, the Bobcat Connections and the Junior Bobcat Connections. The way I'm hearing it is that it sounds as though the Junior Bobcat Connections is a lot more of enrichment and fewer reasons to be there for consequences or positive behavioral interventions where it, it sounds as though for Dalton and the high school, it sounds more on the consequences and, and restorative justice. That's how, that's how it comes across, the mail that got sent out, that's how it comes across. And it sounds less like enrichment, more like consequences.
I don't think, oh, I think the, from my perspective, and Ellen can correct me, I think the Bobcat, Bobcat Connection senior is really looking at a lot of academic supports. And that's really where we want it to be, less enrichment because the other students have clubs and sports and extracurricular things for other enrichment or they have jobs after school. So for that, we're looking at a lot of academic support and then some based on the fact that if, if it's used as a disciplinary measure, then you're also getting academic support during that time.
We have yet to use that as a disciplinary measure for the Bobcat senior connections. Bobcat Bridge, we use quite a bit, but also for the Bobcat Bridge, it's not just students who are having consequences too. It's, it's students who need extra intervention as well. So we have one of our, one of our strongest teachers who's, you know, licensed in both general ed and special ed, working with these students. And we've seen tremendous increase in some, there's one student that we, we didn't even have last year coming to school and now is coming to school and has finished four classes already, right?
That's fantastic.
We're seeing some really good successes with that, but we haven't, the intent of the senior Bobcat Connections is for tutoring, but it, it can also be used as, as a measure to try to keep children from being suspended.
But, but, so when this happens during the school day, a student is out of a class for a good amount of time. An incident happens in an effort to de-escalate the students, de-escalate the environment, they may miss two or three periods.
Right.
Because they've missed so much school and because the learning that has happened over the past 15, 18 months has been impacted, removing them from instruction is really counterproductive.
Right.
I can't find a tutor to do a better job teaching English than Kathy Gallo, Kathy Chirk-Gallo, or Becky Dangerfield, or Donna Urban, or Madison Tapp. So when they miss that course because of a behavior problem, for consequence, whether it's you're in the office for two periods, Bobcat Connections come in play to restore that instruction. And I apologize, I didn't, didn't actually edit the letter, it wasn't my letter. I think that between this period of traditional consequences that happened with night school last year too, moving to a, to an environment of PBIS over time, there needs to be a safety net of some sort.
Right.
And so we're working on that as, as administrators and creative thinkers, you know, how do we create a program that does provide education to a child, provides counseling to a student who is escalated, somehow restoring the educational environment, somehow catching that instruction? We do that through Bobcat Connections and we can't, that's the purpose of Bobcat Connections. It is not night school. It wasn't ever intended to be night school again. Night school had a purpose for a period of time, but right now we're trying to change that, we're trying to help our children to get the learning they need to have. The Junior Bobcat, both of them are also supported by different grants.
Right.
And so there are, there are parameters around those grants, especially over the 21st century that we've done for elementary. It, it really is a lot of enrichment, you know, a lot of enhancement, but it's also to help parents work till five.
Right.
I mean, it truly is.
Yeah.
You know, one of those conversations we had yesterday was, when do we start looking at a program from birth to five?
It's coming.
It's coming.
It's coming, yeah.
So that program, the premise of that grant is really about providing an environment for the children who cannot go home because they can't be there alone.
Right.
To have a cynical scenario and make it an environment in which they really are comfortable.
To have a safe place and go and make it an environment in which they really are comfortable after 7.5 hours of class. But the Bobcat connection program at this, the middle and senior, it really is to, as you fall, we're going to catch you instructionally if we can so that you get the learning that, that you didn't today because you didn't get a whole lot of it last year.
Right.
So, I wonder if that explains anything?
Yes, thank you.
So I have some quick ones. They're going to be quick. How do teachers feel about it is one? How do the students feel about it would be my, my other? And you said you brought chocolate. Does that meet our division-wide?
Wellness policy.
Snack protocol? You don't have to answer that one, so I'm just playing with that.
I already break it. I paid for the chocolate myself.
Don't even answer it. Don't answer it. Just your way from him.
I wanted to lighten the mood a little bit. But the first two questions, you know, teacher, teacher feelings about it generally and student. I'd really like to know that.
We have only surveyed in one place so far, Radford High School. And our survey results were good. I thought it was a little too early to survey because I'm like, guys, we just started. But they, we got lots of good, rich information. And 82% are like, we want to really change our culture. We want a more caring culture that scoops up all kids. And, and really, these changes have been necessary for a long time. It's not that we won't address the people that didn't answer it that way. But there wasn't anybody that was like absolutely not doing this. There were a couple of people that said that they don't want students to have rewards. And I guess we would have to have a discussion about what those rewards are. But you know, we're also doing a lot of P D along the way too and in lots of different ways. More so at, because McCarg and Bell Heath have sought more with morning meeting, trainings. We're doing something called Spoonfuls where we're just doing little 30-minute things of restorative practices that you can do in your classroom. November 1st, we'll start our purposeful practices from our trauma-sensitive stuff that'll go out to all teachers to say, here's things in your classrooms that really help to address, purposeful practices to address trauma and things like that. So surveying teachers. So on an ongoing basis, we've just started focus groups with middle schoolers. We'll start them with high schoolers and then obviously with teachers in the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Be there. Just a time factor. I think we're, each school is doing well considering it's October 12. They've done a lot and we are not making it, we're not making it a race. And everybody has to move at their own comfortable pace and they're moving at different paces. And I think that's okay. That's where they've got to be. Their team has got to be there and it's got to move slowly.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very much. You cleared up a lot for me.
Plenty of articles if people want them.
Okay.
Last two things. I have a visit Thursday at 11 o'clock to McCarg with Ms. Patterson and I believe Ms. Critterton, or Ms. Foster and maybe Ms. Huntington may be coming. If any of you, two, two of you can come, if you would like to come. It's 11 o'clock on Thursday. I've done quite a bit since you were there last time, so would love to have you. Just, I don't know if you want to talk about that right now, but.
No, we don't.
And then the last thing, I had F F R C A on here for our vaccinated employees, but I, I think I'd like to change that because I really need your help. I'm really concerned about the health and well-being of our teachers. They are just absolutely working themselves to death.
Yep.
And I think that we need to figure out something, something to help them. You know, we do have, we were one of the, we were fortunate in that we have a Wednesday afternoon, but a lot of that is filled up with P D, which, which a lot of that is not coming from us. A lot of that's from the state requirements and things. And of course, there are some things that are important to us like the P B I S and trauma-informed destruction and things like that. But I'm in the schools quite a bit and I can see how hard they're working. And, and our children are difficult right now. I mean, they're, we have some that are just very, very challenging. And I understand that because they're coming in from being gone for 20 months with no routine and structure as far as school settings go. But I'm up for any ideas that you all have. I've talked to Ellen a little bit about, you know, can we provide some more opportunities for teacher workdays, but we have to be careful with that with the calendar. Because any workday that we would add on, we'd have to add on another day at the end. Or if we wanted to do a, a late arrival or early dismissal, we're, we're about 30 hours at the elementary school away from not meeting the 990-hour requirement. So we have to be really careful about that too because we're going to have snow.
We've got 30 hours to play with, so to speak.
We have 30 hours to play. So you have to have 990. We have 1,020 at the elementary level. So we generally have a lot more. But due to having two schools on one campus, we had to really work the schedule on that one.
That's just five. Is that even, that's not even five snow days?
It's, no, it's less than five snow days.
Now, snow days, you can also.
Yep, you can.
Do asynchronous.
And I got an email today too.
That was, that just shot down my next idea.
So Holly Coy did say.
I mean, snow day is the best part of the winter.
Yeah, they get, they need their snow days.
Did I send that to you today?
Is there any way to do, and this is not saying I'm promoting it or not, and teachers listening may have a fit. I'm just trying to come up with some ways to reward you guys. I've talked with several school divisions over the last couple of days. Some really nice folks and it's, it's nice to commiserate with the other divisions and they're facing the same kinds of things. And I know Pulaski County has to do because of staff shortaging. And correct me if I'm wrong, they're doing virtual on Fridays, correct?
Through October.
Through October. Is there any way that we, and I'm not advocating for Friday necessarily, some days that we could have asynchronous to give our teachers a break?
Mr. Graham and I talked about it too. For every day a student who has a challenging behavior misses the school.
That's true.
Routine is broken and part of the process begins all over again with that child. So some of your, some of your teachers who are in these situations don't appreciate stopping and starting and stopping and starting. And additionally, when we touched on the two days, I did get an email from a parent who did not like the fact that we had had one more days for that child into the summer. So it's a, it's a bit of a conundrum right now.
Yeah.
And right now, we're, we're, as far as, as days go, we're pretty good until we get to February or March.
We are.
Because we have, we have two days in October. We have another day in November. We have Thanksgiving. Then we have a very long Christmas break. Then, then we hit February and we got a long time span. So maybe by that time, we'll be called up.
And we'll be over our snow.
Yeah, we'll know, we'll know how much snow.
So we'll kind of know how many days we have.
Yeah, that can run into March.
You know, when I think about, in addition to the problems with kids being home and being out of the routine and parents then having to get childcare, creating asynchronous instruction is, is, puts more stress on the teachers. I don't, I don't think that solves the problem.
Isn't the answer staring us in the face with Wednesdays? Can't we protect those Wednesday afternoons for teachers? To give them that time to protect it from meetings and other things? I mean, I would think we as a board can say Wednesdays are protected. I'm, I'm not saying, you know, we, we say this as, as the commanding body or whatever we were called. That's not my point, but isn't it staring us in the face already, the answer to the question?
It depends on, on who on Wednesday is being, is in a meeting. So obviously our R T I director, the ones who are R T I coordinators, they are, they are meeting a lot. They're meeting a lot. Our administrators, they're meeting a lot. When there is P B I S training, we try to do it only an hour, I think, at each school. It is not everybody right now, it's committees. So it's, it's a select group. I would have to do a study of Wednesdays, which I could do, to tell you exactly how many teachers are affected by the Wednesday calendars.
My, we, we all live here. So in the community, we hear different things. And what I hear about Wednesdays is they're more exhausted after Wednesdays than they are the rest of the days. Maybe it's because the break in the routine, they have to sit in a two-hour meeting. And I'm not saying everyone. I'm just, you know, you hear that stuff. You don't always hear the positive, I know. But I just feel like Wednesdays were created to sanitize, to clean, and P D was brought up. Meetings, I don't remember being brought up as part of, as part of the calendar when we discussed it. Maybe I missed that.
I think you missed that.
Yeah, I may have. I may have very well missed it, so I'm, I'm guilty of that. But I feel like we have the time built in where we don't have to mess with snow days and add extra days and.
I think we, I think Mr. Graham, you and I spoke that the first five snow days are snow days.
Yeah.
You know, we, we love a good snow day too and we know that it's a nice.
Well, and, and it's every, it's our entire staff that's worn out. I mean, it's the entire staff, from our teachers to our administrators, to our custodians, to our school nutrition. I mean, it's everybody. It's everybody. So when, when we think about these things, we got to think about the entire division.
We have a free shipping tomorrow and I think it would be a good time for us to talk about Wednesdays and who's involved on each Wednesday so we have a better idea of what teachers are the ones that are, the burden is being placed on. So we can identify those.
It's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Do you all have ideas you've thought about that you could share with, with us?
I have a, I have a question that I think is more for the health department, you know, and, and to ask them. But you know, part of the reason why teachers are having to do all these meetings on Wednesdays is because they can't meet before school, meet after school because the students are not allowed to be corralled in the gym or the cafeteria or whatever. Is, is what we're still hearing that the students still cannot be even, okay?
I just talked to her today.
Did you?
I did.
Okay.
They're still really recommending no, no cafeteria, no.
Even with masks on and.
Even with masks.
So, so football games are okay, but Kev?
Outside.
Outdoor.
Outside, yeah. Basketball games.
So will basketball games?
Volleyball games.
Do you have to wear the mask? Try to separate as much as possible.
Okay.
It's just, you know.
What about teacher bonuses? That would help. We've discussed that numerous times.
The, with, and we just went through the capital outlay project. So you've seen how much money we spent already. So I don't think that we could give bonuses out of that for our vaccinated folks like we wanted to because we're spending that money like crazy. However, Carrie and I have talked about a potential bonus.
Yeah. Oh, good.
Yeah, I know you brought it up a couple of meetings ago.
Do we give that before Christmas or do we wait to see what our money looks like, you know, more towards the end of the school year like we did last year? I think, I'm, I'm, I think that's something that we need to do.
Yeah.
If we have, if we have the money. I mean, I really do think that that's important, as hard as they're working for everybody, like we did last year.
Yeah.
And I think we, we, we were hopeful unless something would have happened in what Carrie and I talked about, that we could do that.
I think it's important that our.
But, but I, can I just say?
Yeah, please do.
I think, I mean, that's, that's, will help morale. It doesn't help with time.
No, it doesn't.
Right.
That's the problem.
I want the teachers to know and the community to know, and I don't think they always do. And that may be communication on, on our side, so to speak. I want them to know that you all are constantly looking for ways to reward them. I cannot tell you how many conversations that I've had with either Ms. Denny or, or Mr. Graham or with another board member or something. They're always looking for ways to help. And it doesn't seem that way to teachers, I'm sure, many, many times when they're out there in the trenches, working so hard, exhausted, trying to get up for the next day, living for the weekend. I want them to know that it may not be the, the solution that, that you're looking for right now, but that, that people are in the background, working really hard to try to find solutions to, to reward you in some way for, for how hard you're working. And I hope any teachers listening will share that with other teachers, that that's what your administration is doing all the time. And we want to, if we come up with something, I think we need to share, just like we're doing right now. What could work to help these folks? Anybody got any other ideas?
Well, my understanding is that some of the exhaustion is also that we don't have substitutes and people having to cover for each other.
That's, that's the biggest issue is that we are so low on substitutes that you all are having to cover planning periods or we're having our specialty teachers at the elementary school having to cover classroom teachers. But, and let me say this too. It is so, and you all know this, it is so important for us to keep schools open as long as we can.
Oh, my gosh. Of course.
And so our teachers, I think, understand that and they're going to do that. But it is making them tired and exhausted. But, but we don't, I, I agree with, with Ellen that to go virtual too would be very difficult.
It is. I just, you know, I was kind of throwing it out there. I was throwing it out there.
There may be a time where we had, where, because there was a time last year where we ran out of staff and we don't want safety to become an issue with supervision.
And for two weeks, if we haven't had a student with COVID, going virtual sounds very odd.
And that's great. I mean, we're, we're lucky in that aspect because we still have some divisions, you know, in the Rennick Valley that are really struggling with their numbers.
Oh, absolutely.
But what, I mean, let's, you know, let's, I think, I like Ellen's idea about let's ask the leadership team what we can do with Wednesdays and see if we can, like you said.
But I, I'm hoping that it is appreciated and not making teachers more exhausted because I feel like then we're not, it was, it's not doing what it was meant to be and maybe we shouldn't have it.
That's kind of my point. Now, again, I may just be talking to the people who are, who are in meetings every week. I don't know. But the, I thought the intention originally was to sanitize every Wednesday.
And we do.
All the rooms and all that.
The intention was, we knew coming back that teachers had no time in the morning or the afternoon because there was no holding area. And we met for many weeks with the committee from all schools to discuss what could we do. We looked at a full day. We looked at a full virtual day, like full asynchronous day. But when the D O E came down with the mandates that you had to go 990 hours, 180 days within person, there was no way we could do it based on the hours.
I would realize it was within person.
So looking at, looking forward, we said, well, can we at least get a half-day every other week or every week? And we chiseled it down, let's do it every week because it's very hard for an R T I meeting to occur at 7:30 in the morning because students are going to class at that period. It's very hard for it to occur at the elementary school at 3 o'clock because buses are still loading. And so having that, some teachers might tell you, I like having a meeting on Wednesday because I don't have to stay after, at 3 o'clock or come in at 7 a.m. So I think there's a trade-off depending on who you're talking to. But I, I, again, it, this half-day was intended to help Radford City Public School meet the needs of children, teachers and families as best we could. We're running the junior Bobcat connection program during that early release. We're running the junior Bobcat connection program on Thursday and Friday when we're having early release. I just, I don't want to send this message to the community that early release is not appreciated by the educators in Radford City School, as you've said, some are saying, because I feel like that's, that's not helpful to all the educators.
I didn't say it wasn't appreciated. I said they're just as exhausted on Wednesdays as full teaching days. Yeah, okay, more exhausted.
I think that it's something that we don't want. I mean, I can do a, a survey and find that out and make sure.
So, so looking in the rearview mirror, what did we, when did we hold those R T I meetings before we had this, this half-day on Wednesday?
Well, we didn't have it, the, the schedule that we had, we have it now because of what we're dealing with with the schools.
And we were out on Wednesdays all day.
Yeah.
So when we had the pandemic.
Right, before, pre-pandemic, I guess is when.
Pre-pandemic, you weren't doing that.
Well, but remember what we were, what we were doing when we were really looking at, when we first put that modified schedule in place, one of the things we talked about that is critical when you're trying to be an inclusive school division is that teachers had to have time for co-planning. That we wanted to see co-planning across, across content areas, that we wanted to see co-planning between general ed and special ed, that we did have time for teachers to be working together. Because I think a lot of people have this false idea that a single teacher goes into a classroom and they do their thing and they teach kids and they grade their papers. You know, the reality is teachers do as much, almost as much work with adults as they do with children to serve children well. So before the pandemic, we had even put in that one period a week. Wasn't it one period that we had?
It depended on the school that you were at.
On Thursday mornings or was the high?
No, no, you're right. So pre-pandemic, we put in Wednesday morning for a late arrival at the high school. The elementary had nothing.
Yes.
We were not getting it. Pre-pandemic, we put 250 children in the cafeteria from 7:30 to 8:15, 7:45 to 8:15. So the teachers could have their meetings then. We also, pre-pandemic at the elementary, you had bus waits for 40 minutes with 200 children in the cafeteria manned by two to three teachers on a rotation.
Or a, or a.
And you had faculty meetings, if I recall, at 8 o'clock at McCarg.
Sometimes you did. But you also, at the elementary level at least, because the high school had that two-hour late arrival, elementary tried to work in periods during a day, one day a week, where there would be grade-level meetings, where they would do, look at data or they would co-plan together. So, but remember. do, look at data, or they would co-plan together. So, but remember, when the pandemic hit, you couldn't hold them in, we can't hold them in mass numbers anymore, which probably was a bad practice to begin with.
Yeah.
Also, it's coming out of my head right now. We have to still, we know that we have a lot of, like, as Dr. Colley said, with so many problems in the school right now, with so much trauma that's been sustained over the pandemic, we have more and more RTIs. I mean, you said we've had how many, and it's October 12?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six meetings. But we were not doing RTI in the fashion that we're doing it now. We did child study meetings, but it, really and truly, over the pandemic, we, you know, when Dr. Colley and Daniel Hill came on, we really looked at those practices around, you know, meeting on students. And it is the best practice, and our administrators now are going to RTIs and saying, let's take them through this, so we know that we have the resources. I think that when the pandemic hit, you know, schools shut down. We've been basically a different model for 15 months. When we came back, last year, we didn't even come back at the beginning of the year. We were, well, we did, we came back hybrid, then we went virtual, then we came back hybrid, then we probably went virtual again. And there was a good, pretty...
About three times.
Period of time where there was only half the population in your classroom at one time. And all day Wednesdays were virtual or asynchronous. They were asynchronous. So there was time during that portion of the week to do some of the meetings and things like this.
Yeah.
It's very, very difficult. It is. I mean, these are huge challenges, and that's what we met. No one's changed what the face of education should look like for a teacher. No one has. Everyone has said, oh, sorry, do the same thing after a worldwide pandemic. But we're not changing it. We didn't change work schedules. We didn't change teacher salaries. We didn't change the culture. And these things are very challenging to all educators right now. We know everyone is tired. We know that. We know our children are tired. We know the custodians are tired. The bus drivers are exhausted. We know that. We're just trying to get through it, I guess, and hopefully find a silver lining, maybe in the next three or four years.
So I think we all agree we have an issue. We're not going to solve it here. We're on the same page. I guess, Ms. Denny, if you don't mind, what I would like to see is that survey of how teachers feel about Wednesdays. And if you don't mind, break it down by school. I think every school's culture is probably a little different.
I'll probably break it down from school to content, as far as I can break it down.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, you usually do. So I would appreciate that, just to, because what we hear a lot is rumors. And we know that. We know that. But I think we all recognize that we have a challenge.
But I will encourage you, when you do, Graham, just please talk to the school administrator, and maybe, you know, go through Rob. I think that's the way it does. But I think your school administrators see things from a global perspective, and they're going to know who's in a lot of meetings. So I do think they're a great resource as well.
And they're in a lot of meetings as well, too.
Yeah. Is there any way to preserve one, two of those Wednesdays for teacher planning?
Again, tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
There's nothing for teachers.
Oh, good.
Run, hide, fight. For what?
Run, hide, fight.
Okay, well, you guys have run, hide, fight. Like, we have leadership, so all admin are over here. They're not in the buildings. So, I mean, I can pull up the schedule and kind of go through it with you, but an example, so next Wednesday, what do you have next Wednesday?
See, that's hard, too, though, because that is so important. I mean, it really is so important.
And I think there are things that are going to be important. So I don't think we'll fix it here.
Yeah, I don't think it will.
So for the sake of time, I would, I would, I guess, like to see the survey.
Well, what's happened, too, and I'm, I'm not throwing anyone under the bus here. When the Wednesday survey came out, and we did the Wednesdays, we did say nothing else should be planned on those Wednesdays. From our level, we can't always, we don't always know what's being planned at a different level.
Right.
So tomorrow, during leadership, we will revisit that.
Yeah.
And say, we have to follow the Wednesday schedule that was originally created. Now, if a school, though, I think a school should have the autonomy to say, hey, I know it's not on the Wednesday schedule, but I'd rather do run, hide, hide, run, hide, fight on Wednesday afternoon than to do it Thursday afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00. Do you see what I'm saying? You would want that administrator to at least go out there and say, you want to do it here, you want to do it there, so that at least you have an idea. And I could see where some teachers who have small children that are going home, who don't want to pay daycare, would say, can we do it from 1:00 to 3:00, so that I'm not paying that daycare from 3:00 to 5:00? So I think that plays into it. But we can definitely talk about that tomorrow.
Okay.
And inquire, you know, what's going on that we don't know about, and how can we reduce that.
That's your answer, is talking to the leadership and letting them...
And the teachers.
And the teachers, yeah, I agree. Okay.
And while we're on the subject of Christmas, since that's a topic in the world right now, if you don't have your tree, but now you ain't getting one, we are going to close the whole system the whole time, right?
Yes, sir.
Including yourself.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. We're ahead of that.
Everybody, lock the doors, go home, do not come into schools.
It's a good time, too, to save some money.
Yeah. And I was thinking, when we look at the budget, we look at a bonus again. But you'll know more when that comes.
Yes.
I was thinking we give a bonus in a chocolate envelope.
Baked by Dr. Colley.
One of my friends the other day messed up and talked about running a race. He said, I immediately washed my mouth out with chocolate.
All right. Oh, mercy. Okay. Okay. Where are we?
Where?
New business.
Your reports of, reports of board members.
Okay. I have one, but anybody else have one?
I've got one quick request.
All right.
It'll be quick. This was very good. Thank you. Could you do this for medical claims? Could you do a medical claim aging, like, zero to 31 days? It's out there, zero to 30, 31 to 60, just to see how much claims we got and how old they are?
They, uh...
They can do it.
They have done that before.
Yeah, they can do that. And one other quick thing.
Is that Sam that would do that?
I think it is.
I think he did it last time.
Okay.
We had an employee last time that came and told us of an experience using the system, and it didn't work. I mean, it just didn't work. And somebody else told me the same thing, said, I did everything, and it just didn't work. I think we should get him to kind of review what we're doing here, if we're not using it right, which we're using it the way they told us to.
I'm a little lost.
We had, remember the last time we had a person that came and tried to get a pre-visit estimate, and never got it?
Yeah, yeah.
Never got it, you know it, so...
Until the bill came. I remember that.
I think it would be a good thing just to follow.
I didn't want to call her out, but...
Not to criticize them, but to see if we can get it straightened out, or where that's coming from. Because somebody else told me the very same thing.
Well, and we talked, we talked to Sam about that, too. I had actually had dinner with him, and that was the first thing that I thought about.
Okay. But he could, he could give us an update on it.
Okay, I can do that.
That's good.
Thank you. I'm done. I'm done.
Okay, anybody else?
No, ma'am.
Uh, this is more to Ms. Long and the public. Ms. Long, on October the 26th, I believe that's a Tuesday, two weeks, the board will have a closed session meeting to discuss the superintendent's contract, and to review norms and protocols, just so for publication.
Time.
Now, I assume we open, close session, and then return.
What time do you plan happening?
Well, the request was at 5:00. I have not heard back from our guest speaker that we're going to have in there with us.
Okay.
And I will know that by next week.
Okay.
He is checking his schedule to see. Is that all you need for the re...
And it will be at the board office.
It will be here.
Mm-hmm.
And while we're on it, board members, do you want it as close to 5:00 as we get it? I know with, we got two full-time working people.
Five's fine.
Any earlier? Is it possible? Just, I'm just throwing that out. If it's not, it's fine. Just let me know, the earliest you can meet.
I could do as early as 4:00.
Okay.
I could also.
4:00? Okay.
Just cut this rate for me, I should have a little bit shorter.
Okay. That might help, especially to you folks that, and I apologize that that's another meeting for you, Ms. Long. I very much appreciate it. All right, anything else before we move to action items? We have a gifted report coming. Anything else before I move to that?
Ms. Eagle's here with us. Come on up, Emily. Sorry you've had to wait so long. So you all had this for...
She gets tomorrow off, right?
And the chocolate.
The afternoon.
And chocolate, yeah.
She's doing a super job for us, and really appreciate everything that you, in fact, she's just, so we've had some transportation issues, and Emily has taken over driving right now, so.
Emily, Emily.
Yeah, that's actually been fun. I was telling Ms. Denny earlier, they're way smarter than I will ever be. The conversation's in that van. I'm like, I'm going to keep driving and not crashing.
I got you. You didn't take your mask off, by the way.
Oh, it was hiding the redness I was going to get. I'm standing up here, but thanks. Do you want me to just go through it, or do you guys have specific questions? How does this work?
Let's see. Well, just whatever makes you comfortable, truthfully.
You want to just skim over it, and then...
Yeah.
Yeah, highlight.
I can certainly, the first kind of beginning of it, we can just skip over all that. The activities that I'm doing as a gifted coordinator, just so you guys know, at Bel Heath and McCarr we do, I have students right now, third through sixth grade. We don't have any students identified currently at McCarr. So the third through sixth grade groups, I do a weekly pull-out group with them. So third and fourth grade are combined, just for number's sake. Then I do a separate fifth grade and a separate sixth. And we'll do enrichment activities. Like, right now, my third and fourth grade, they're just doing some engaging, like, critical thinking, problem-solving, October-themed stuff, because they just really love, you know, the theme stuff still. My fifth graders actually came up with, they want to create their own escape room. So they had, they got together last week with a team member in their group, and they basically pitched a theme to the rest of them, and they voted on their theme. And so the next few weeks, we're actually going to dive deeper into it, and they're going to create one, and hopefully be able to present it to their classrooms. Space is limited at Bel Heath, though, so we are trying to maneuver where we can do that safely, of course. My sixth grade group, they, at the beginning of the year, I asked them, what did they want to get out of the group? And a lot of them said they wanted to do, like, higher-level math and applicable things. So taking their math, but like, learning how to manage a budget, which I was like, this is very weird for sixth graders. What do they want with it? So we're kind of doing a game of life right now. They've inherited some money, and we're kind of role-playing through a game. And the way that they, their decisions are going to influence how they kind of set their budget, and it has some, like, pre-algebra activities in there. So hopefully, as they transition into seventh grade, that provides them a little background information, too. At Dalton, my seventh and eighth graders, I have two separate times, because those groups are really big. So we're doing a lunch group. I do a lunch group on Thursdays with the eighth graders, and a lunch group on Fridays with the seventh graders. The seventh graders were currently planning a walking tour of Radford, so we're kind of developing, like, trying to hit, like, certain spots in Radford that we feel like are, like, areas to highlight. And the kind of the goal is that, is to think outside the box, get creative, and problem-solve, and can we find some things, and potentially even present it to this council as an actual item for them to use to promote the city. So trying to pull in, like, our surrounding areas and allow them to, again, think outside the box a little bit more. And our eighth graders really want to do, like, Socratic seminars and debates right now, so that's what we're kind of focusing on. We kind of just threw one out there last week, and it was very interesting. And then we backed, we backed up and kind of evaluated, like, what, you know, what's going on. So that's kind of what I've been doing throughout the week with those kids. The high school students, you know, my, is more of a check-in up there. I make myself available. They know, they have my email. There's a Google Classroom that I'll, like, every now and then pop in, like, check in if anybody needs anything. Oftentimes, they don't. They're so bombarded with their classwork and their AP. So right now, we're collecting all of AP ordering. That is due at the beginning of November, and I'll hit the AP here in a little bit. But, and then Governor's School, of course, I'll check in with them, probably like, once or twice a month, just to make sure that there's, if there's any issues with anything. And again, typically, they're so, they're pretty self-sufficient, that they do a really good job. But I'll try to make myself available if they need any help with classroom schedules and stuff. And then I'll just keep going through. I teach a seventh-grade critical thinking elective. That's a sixth-period class. That's been set up to be open to any sixth grader, or seventh grader, excuse me. I have 19 in there right now, and so we're just, you know, we're rolling with it. It was a little interesting at the beginning of the year, but we are hitting a group, so it's great. And then, of course, meetings or testing. Our testing is already up from last year. You'll notice on the report that the total testing for students and referrals are only seven all of last year. Part of that was, I think, parents were hesitant, teachers especially were hesitant. They only had the kids face-to-face two days a week for half of the school year. By the time we kind of got to a point where maybe they knew, it was April, May, and we kind of just discussed, let's hold off till Wednesday, so that the kid kind of had more of a chance to be of a fresher state versus trying to do a gifted referral in the middle of SLLs, or AP exams, or any other, all those year-end exams as well. So we're already up to eight referrals, so I anticipate a lot more. And if we look back, kind of historically, at our numbers, they've been around 32 to 40 a year, so begin that kind of range. So we'll probably anticipate that as well. So, yeah. And then the report on academics. We have, currently have six students enrolled in Governor's School. Two of those are girls, four are boys. Last year, we had five, or six applicants. And just breaking down some of those demographics again, we had five girls apply and one boy apply. Of that population, we had two girls go, and then the mail-in as well. We want to continue to promote this at RHS. So, you know, we've been talking, how do we, how do we make sure that students from middle school know the path that they need to take to be able to make themselves competitive for Governor's School? Because it's not just GPA, it's not just their aptitude. Like, we need to look at their SLL scores, and in fact, what test are they taking? So instead of waiting till the end of eighth grade to talk about, talk about that with them, trying to back up a little bit more, and maybe at the end of sixth grade or even seventh grade, because really, some of these kids, if they're not taking algebra in seventh grade, it's hard for them to really be competitive with the other applicants by 10th grade. And Governor's School always has commented that we're sending, like, that we are like the cream of the crop there.
Yeah.
They're like, and this is great for you guys. If we could send more kids, they would love it. But really, I think that if, I mean, if we could potentially increase to even four students from our district, I think that would be very valuable, so that more kids might even feel like, oh, I have more of a shot to go. Because I do think some kids are held back, thinking, there's only three. I know one more increases, not a lot, but I think that number could help. So just to put on your guys' radar, that would be great. And again, right now, seventh graders are the only students who can take algebra, one right now, without some, like, special provisions. So I know Ms. Denny and I are going to meet with Mr. Freeman here shortly to try to reevaluate what that criteria looks like. Because if a kid is on a path for Governor's School, or desires to explore that, but they miss that opportunity at seventh grade, how can we, how can we offer this? Because we don't want to hold people back. You know, if they're willing to put in that work, what can we do for them? So I think we're going to open that conversation up and see, how can we serve some of these kids a little bit more as well? Is there any questions before I move on?
This is one of the most comprehensive reports we've gotten, and I'm very pleased with you putting this together. Thank you very much.
Of course.
You said we had three slots in Governor's School for what age group?
Per each year. So we have three seniors that go and three juniors. They apply their 10th grade year. Yeah. And it was a very competitive group last year. That was the first year I assessed.
I saw another six slots.
Yes, six total. Yep.
For that next, okay.
Yeah, six total. So we pay for those six slots. We have, the summer school, residential school has not been posted yet. The VDOE has been a little bit, I think their system's down. We got an update recently. It should be live Friday with an update, so we can actually send that out. So hopefully, we get some kids. I think we already have some interest for some students who want to go through that process. Last year, for AP, we had 118 students enrolled. Out of that 118, 61 students took 99 total exams. And then there's the breakdown there. I won't go through all of that. But our overall pass rate for the 2021 exam year was 62%. That's our local rate. And so if you notice, that's up from 51% from the previous year. And keep in mind, I think this, these numbers are great for me to, I think, really interesting. The 51% is when students were taking the exams at home. This was when the, this was right after it shut down. And so AP opened it up. And so AP opened it up. All these exams are at-home exams. They had missed the last two months of instruction, essentially. So I think it's a positive and I think it goes to show that in-person is really vital, even for our higher students. This is, you know, important information. We don't have the Virginia or Global Pass rate yet for this past year. Yeah, and then the referrals, like I said, we had seven last year. I do anticipate that we will get a lot more. And then the rest of it is just some demographic background for you guys to review. And then, I do have some other things if you guys want, but I don't know. I don't wanna take too much time here if you don't need it. I'll just quickly say, we kinda, Ms. Danny and I met, what was it, two weeks ago, maybe? And we were, we're looking at our SLL scores compared to their SGAs. So I polled all of our third through eighth grade information. And I think this is not gonna be a surprise for many people, but language arts, there really doesn't seem to be a concern, even with the lost educate, like, the lost years and time that we've had because of COVID. But math still, even for our gifted students. I have three kids at the Bell Heath area that, as of right now, if you took their scores, where they're at are not projected to pass their SLL. At the middle school level, last year, we had three kids not pass their seventh-grade exams, SLLs. So I think that this is key information. And if we look at that even further, at the elementary, two of those three students were virtual students the whole year. At the high school, I believe one of the students was a full-year virtual student. So again, reiterating that, how important in-person is, I think there's a, I have a screenshot up here that kindergarten, first and second have never had a normal school year. They had, never had one. And third grade, their last normal year was kindergarten. And my husband's a sixth and seventh-grade teacher. He teaches math and history. And the history's not as, you know, as much, but he's trying to do algebra with these kids who can't do times tables. So when we, I pulled up this and I was like, you know, James, they haven't been in a normal year since third or fourth grade, when that information, look how much is lost.
That's wild.
And, you know, we're talking to cohorts with gifted, you know, in our, in our area, there's students in, I mean, we're seeing our school that, again, even though these are our gifted students, and it doesn't make them not gifted, but the importance of being able to receive education. You know, we have a student, one of our cohort people said that they were three years ahead of their peers before the shutdown. And now they are about a year behind, because their parents kept them home. And then with it, they just, they had such a hard time at home and the fear, the anxiety of everything. But again, just how important it is. So we're seeing it across the board. I think math is consistent. And we're seeing that with the gifted as well, that that's not our strongest area yet, so hoping to see improvements soon. Any questions for me?
Great, great.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, very helpful.
Yeah, you guys-
So what do you need from us to have that extra slot? Is that just a budget item?
I think it'd be a budget item.
We can talk about that.
It's very expensive. You know me, for years, I've been banging on the door saying, can we please get another student-per-grade level? And it's so much money.
It is.
I don't remember what the, the amount is now.
It's close to $8,000.
So $8,000 per student, per year?
Plus travel, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus, that doesn't count the travel and transportation and other fees.
Can we fit them all on the van that takes them over?
Yes, that's not a problem.
The van currently is only a seventh student, but, so we'd have to use the bigger van.
For designs.
Architects aren't gonna like you after.
We can send it to passengers.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We'd still be able to use the van, though.
And wasn't last year really competitive?
Yes.
Yes, very competitive.
It was very competitive last year. And I would assume, that was the first year I did it. So I would assume if I went back and worked, I would guess that any, I mean, to take the initiative to apply for Governor's School, you know, that in and of itself, I feel like is a big deal. Because they have to go through a lot of testing. They have to be willing to go up to a teacher and ask for a referral.
Yeah.
Or a reference, excuse me, and kind of put themselves out there. They also have to know that certain path, like, a recommendation from a teacher, if you're slacking off in class, you know, these aren't kids that probably are gonna do that and then be willing to go ask for that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that we're, we're asking very competitive students to apply for this program.
What are the things that, that caught my ear when you said it, is, is the kids not able to take algebra in seventh grade?
Yes.
How many of those three, or two, two or three, or is it three per grade level, right? How many of those three have, have we ever had who did not take algebra in seventh grade?
I don't know. I can, I'll look, I'll go back and look though.
It seems to be like most of those kids would, because there's so few slots.
I do think-
Well, we changed the system.
Right.
So probably, that's, that has positively affected the ones who are at Governor's School right now.
Right.
So a couple of years ago, we took, when we took, a long time ago, we said you can get, you can take Algebra I in seventh grade.
Long time ago, we said you need to take it in fifth grade.
Yeah, it was wild.
We had more kids failing Algebra I, SLL test.
Yeah.
And the VDOE came out with stricter, you know, with better standards and just an explanation of how important every year was. So when you put a child from sixth grade into seventh grade Algebra I, you've taken two years of math away from them that build the foundation. Because when you look at the seventh grade and the eighth grade standards, they lead up to Algebra I in geometry. Like, they're the foundation for Algebra I. So now, if you, if you're gifted in math, you go into seventh grade Algebra I. If you're identified gifted, so we're looking at about 20, 21 kids that go into Algebra I. You can take Algebra I in eighth grade if you're transferring in and you're gifted, or if we take a student and do some additional testing with them and they show the aptitude to go ahead and skip eighth-grade math. The problem with that is, correct me if I'm wrong, Emily, is when you apply to Governor's School, you gotta make sure you have Algebra II under your belt before you get in.
Yeah.
So if we tell a student who is not gifted, but doesn't advocate for themselves to take Algebra I in eighth grade, and they wait until ninth grade, they cannot compete with Governor's School.
Right.
So we've gotta help, we've, we've gotta look at our practices to see how we can make that more equitable for students especially interested and more remembered.
Is the cadence now Algebra I, II in geometry, or is it Algebra I in geometry?
Algebra I in geometry.
Okay. So it's the second.
Yeah. And we know that there are some kids that haven't been identified yet, who probably should be gifted math. And they're kind of, you know, they're just okay with doing what they're doing and, you know. So I, I think there could be some argument, like, well, if they're not gifted, why would they apply? But I think there are just kids that have not been identified yet, or maybe their parents have chosen not to proceed with that path. And come 10th grade, that can come back to.
Can you explain that? So I'm not, not even connected to that sort of thing.
No, sure.
The other thing, Emily, and I talked about was somehow looking at past valedictorians, salutatorians, and kind of taking data of their track in high school. Because if the only way you can become valedictorian is if you go to Governor's School, then we have limited access to that, that award. And how can we somehow bring a more equitable practice for our students who wanna stay at the high school for whatever reason and choose not to apply for Governor's School, but can still compete with that based on what we offer?
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to, we're gonna-
We'll just have to break it down a little bit more.
If we wanna keep valedictorian and salutatorian.
If we wanna keep valedictorians.
That's another battle.
That's another day.
That's definitely another day.
Maybe another year.
So we need to-
A motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the gifted.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thanks so much, Emily.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Sorry we kept you so late.
You know, my husband had to do that.
Oh, you were enjoying it.
Get some chocolate before you go home.
All right, final reading, policy updates, August 2021. Mr. Graham?
So we've already actually approved these, but we need to approve them as the final reading.
All right, I need a motion for final reading, policy updates of August 2021, as presented.
I'll make a motion for final reading, policy updates, August 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question? Wasn't there a policy in here that we said we would discuss again? Was that last time?
In these policies?
There was nothing that we were-
I don't-
I don't think in these, these are, these are just-
Those are just standards.
Legal references and typographical errors, so.
All right, I'm good.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other? All right, Dr. Altieri, we need a closed meeting.
I make a motion that we go into closed meeting for the following purposes, under Virginia statute 2.23711, which authorizes closed meetings for specific limited purposes. The first, my first motion is that we go into closed meeting for the following purpose. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of employees.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Then I make a motion that we go into closed meeting for reason number two. Discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters of students.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
And third, I move that we go into closed session for reason number seven. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to litigation.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Say aye by raising your right hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, raise your right hand. Motion passes.
That's it.
And that was number seven?
Yes.
All right, we are now in closed session. Let's- Let's...
All right, I need a motion to convene in regular session, please.
I'll make a motion to convene in regular session.
Do I have a second? Second?
Second. Sorry.
It's late. It's late. Any discussion? All in favor say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Dr. Terry, will you...